Boy, it got really quiet. Thank you. Everybody ready? All right, everyone, welcome to the July 17th Federway City Council meeting for 2018. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for being here on this beautiful July afternoon and early evening. So, we are here for the Special Olympics USA recap and recognition. Really tremendous seeing the results and the effort and all of the great things that happened with the Special Olympics USA, with all the games throughout the Puget Sound. With that, I'm going to turn it over right now to John Hutton, our Parks Director, who will then proceed to introduce Sharon Boyle.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and members of council. We could not be more proud of the showing of our Special Olympians, the outreach of the city, and second only to how proud we are of our athletes. I'd like to introduce Sharon Boyle, who's our Inclusion Coordinator. Our Special Olympics Coordinator has been a fixture in Federway for 30-plus years and working with this population has just done a magical job, so I'm going to turn it over to Sharon to tell you about the events.
Thank you, John. Thank you, council members and Mayor Farrell. We had two teams, the Federway Soccer Special Olympics Team and the Federway Unified Flag Football Team, and the Gaming Team, who were asked to represent Team Washington at the 2018 USA Games in Seattle on July 1st through the 6th. The members of the gold medal soccer team, I would like to introduce them, and please hold your applause. Laura Gorgon, Brandon Grosskost, Tara Gunther.
You know what, actually, while you're calling them out, as your name gets called, and let's start over again, as your name gets called, can you come that way and then come over here and then, just kind of come that way, and then come over to where Tyler is, right here? Tyler, can you raise your hand? All right, so let's start over.
Okay.
Please.
Laura Gorgon, Brandon Grosskost, Tara Gunther, John Leckman, and Coach Stu Snow. This team did a phenomenal job, winning all of their games except one, but the most important one was the last one, which was the gold medal game, and they did an excellent job and won with a score of three to one. Members of the flag, Unified Flag Football Team, Alex Williams, Troy Marsh, Ben Kennish, Sam Shelton, Nicholas King, and this team was coached by two excellent coaches as well, Clay Williams and Assistant Coach Jeff Mahala, and they ended up having a hard, tough game on the last one, but ended up bringing home the silver medal to represent Federway. Oh, and Roy First Rider. We also had a new program this year that was called Gaming, and we had an athlete from Federway participate in that, and he also brought home a gold medal, and that was Tim Dempsey. I would like to thank everyone who helped to make the 2018 Games a reality, an uplifting, and inclusive, and memorable event for the thousands of athletes and their families who attended. And special thanks to Tim Johnson and his team, members of the council, and everybody who worked countless hours to make these events here in Federway a success. Your support of our Federway Special Olympics Athletes Team, Washington Athletes, is so very, very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. Let's have everybody, where's Tyler? Tyler, how should we do the picture? Should we have the council stand up in the back, or should we have the council come down? What's that? All right, so come on down. Let's get council down there, and then can you, we're going to need to bring it really together.
All right, so slide in, see, guys. Tom, people in the back. Come on in, the right. All right. All right. Congratulations. Thanks, you. Congratulations, too. Take care. All right. Thank you. All right. Congratulations. Thanks, you. Congratulations, too. Take care. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Where'd you do that?
It was absolutely fantastic. It was a great event for this community and for this region. Okay, now, moving on to Item B, the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation regarding Camp Kilworth. Is Jennifer Mortensen here with the Preservation Coordinator? Hi, Jennifer.
Hello. Actually, I'm going to talk first, if that's okay.
Of course, yes, please.
Introduce Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and welcome neighbors and friends. My name is Suzanne Vargo, and I'm a 48-year resident of Federway. I'm a board member of the Historical Society of Federway, and so tonight I will be speaking on their behalf. I would like to first give special thanks to Tom and Mary Ellis, Lynn Long, Peter Zimmerman, and neighbor Nancy for all of their hard work. Not only did they provide the history for this nomination, but they have been the guardians and the caretakers for the camp. None of this would be possible without their unfaltering determination and true love for this unique land. And thank you, Susan Honda, for your support and your stories as well. Earlier this year, we nominated Camp Kilworth, the Historical Society nominated Camp Kilworth to be an endangered place for 2018, and in May, we had received exciting news that not only had the camp been accepted, but it was voted number one out of the five nominees. Now, before I continue further, I must stop here and say how amazing it was to work with the Preservation Service Coordinator, Jennifer Mortensen. She is truly a Jill of all trades. She displayed patience, thoughtfulness, outside-of-the-box thinking, and resourcefulness, and these were just what it took to find the nomination I entered when I didn't save it correctly. So, thank you to your IT team, greatly appreciated. Jennifer is no stranger to Federway because she was here just last year, giving the Warehouser Campus the top stop, top, the top spot in, for the Endangered Place distinction for 2017. And we are very grateful to the Washington Trust Historical Preservation for validating what we know to be true. These places must be saved. The amazing, one-of-a-kind Camp Kilworth has been in our city for over 84 years. Can you imagine how many kids have visited the camp? More importantly, how the camp experience has served these kids and aided them in their future. The 1935 Lodge that was built by the Rotary Tacoma survivors of the First World War, they built this lodge, ensuring the Scouts would be able to enjoy the lodge for years to come, but it is the lodge that needs the immediate attention before winter comes. Wiring must be installed so heat can once again protect the structure during the damp and rainy season. The land was donated to the Boy Scouts of America 84 years ago by William Kilworth, and the deed that runs with the property says scouting skills are to be taught. Currently, the Boy Scouts of America have abandoned the camp, and the Kilworth Foundation is deciding on how to move forward. The Friends of Camp Kilworth and the Historical Society are confident that with an appropriate business plan, the foundation will be eager to be a part of the camp's second life. As per the deed, education and scouting will be a priority. In addition to this, we are hoping that through the Federway School District, we will be able, that every child will be able to visit the camp over the course of their schooling. We owe it to our children to provide them with a life-changing experience, one that solidifies the importance of health and healthy living, learning good stewardship, and engaging with students from other schools. How does a child feel after a fun field trip? How did you all feel when you got to go on one? They are happy and grateful. It is these experiences that create a solidified community, happy, healthy youth that will be vested in our city and want only the best for their growing children. Our Federway history shows that if there was ever a need in our community, well, the community just stepped right up. For instance, the South King County Fire and Rescue Ladies Brigade, they were known as the Bra Brigade, they had bake sales and fundraisers, and they paid for their own fire truck. So, if it can be done, we can do it. And if I may borrow the mayor's own words, "Together we can." We are asking the city to deem the camp as an open space going forward. This is hugely significant, for it will discourage development and open up funds to maintain the camp for its future. Once it is operational, the camp will provide many opportunities to engage revenue, to fund its own upkeep through education and venue rentals. We are asking all of our citizens to step up and be a part of this exciting adventure. We will be creating opportunities for citizens to help out and contribute in whatever way they can, and we are hoping to have the local businesses do the same. If we all do a little, together we can make a big difference in our city. We can make Camp Kilworth successful for another 80 years. Now, please, welcome Jennifer Mortensen, Preservation Service Coordinator for the Washington Trust for Historical Preservation.
I know that our title is a long word. Just make sure this loads here real quick. Council members and Mayor, thank you for making some time in your agenda this evening for me. I do remember a few faces from last year in my presentation about the Warehouser Campus, which is an issue we are certainly still involved in, is certainly ongoing. As Suzanne mentioned, Federway has made our list two years in a row, and we are excited that that means that the citizens of Federway are active and engaged and excited about what historic resources can bring to a community like Federway, especially a relatively young community, at least technically speaking, with the foundation of the city. So, I work, just as a quick introduction, I work for the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, which is a statewide group that, whose mission focuses on preservation advocacy. We do quite a bit of other things, education, Main Street program, a couple of different programs and grants, but advocacy really is the heart of our organization and our mission, and the Most Endangered Places Program is the core of that advocacy. So, every year, we solicit nominations from the public and ask people if there is a place in their community that needs extra attention and advocacy, and, of course, reaches a threshold of significance that would merit the statewide preservation organization getting involved. And this year, the Camp Kilworth was nominated, and it was placed on our list. So, one of the sort of benefits of the program is that we produce short educational videos about the situation to help spread the word and to sort of give voice to the issue. Before I play the video, I just wanted to mention that these structures and this space is significant for this area, not just because of the history they represent, but because of their uniqueness in this area. And Federway, as all of you, I'm sure, know, is fast-growing, and there are a lot of, or there isn't a lot of these types of buildings and spaces left. And while we are a historic preservation organization that traditionally focuses more on architectural features, this place is a little bit unique in the fact that the open space is part of the historic significance of the place. And so, the architectural structures there that were built by the Rotary and some other structures as well, have a balance with the open space, and the open space is tied to the, to the history of the place as well, similar to the Warehouser Campus as well. So, without, without further ado, I just wanted to go ahead and play this video. It's a little bit longer than the one last year for Warehouser, but hopefully, it will be just as interesting.
In 1934, William Kilworth purchased about 25 acres in the South Sound area and immediately deeded the property to the Tacoma Area Council of Boy Scouts. World War I veterans, who were members of the Tacoma Rotary, built the centerpiece of the camp the next year, in 1935, the rustic-style Rotary Lodge. Over the decades, several other supporting structures were built, including an outdoor amphitheater that looks out over a dramatic view of South Puget Sound.
And that was the height of the Depression, and here's the Rotary, Kilworth and Rotary, putting money into something like this. They felt like it was that important, and I don't, I think that's only grown in importance.
It has served thousands of Scouts and young people. It has provided education of historical sense, as well as providing basic skills and actual life-changing experiences.
Today, the property and its shoreline are one of only two places in rapidly growing Federway regarded as a highly sensitive environmental area, and the high-bank coastal forest on the property also serves as a wildlife corridor.
Federway's a fast-developing area, and there's so little left of the native environment. It's the Second Coast Forest. This area was all logged in the 20s and 30s, but it has come back, and it gives you a good idea of what succession is, how the trees return.
Since we have so many major developments in our area, this is a one-of-a-kind, beautiful, open space that is valuable, not only for the wildlife, but the historic sense, and our historic places need to be saved.
The Scouts owned and operated the camp for over 80 years, but due to declining membership, their operations at Camp Kilworth ceased in 2016. In accordance with the stipulation in William Kilworth's original 1934 deed, ownership of the property now refers back to the Kilworth family foundations. Local advocates are concerned for the site, because the buildings, including the Historic Lodge, currently sit vacant, unheated, and unmaintained. Local advocates also feel it is important for the property to remain an open space dedicated to education, as the Kilworths always intended.
The hills and the trees and the water and the lodge, it's just a really pretty setting, and it's, it's something that we cannot recreate. It's very unique, and it's one of our assets, and it's one of the things that we should be very, very proud of and do our best to keep.
I've lived here in this immediate area for 45 years, and so I know the importance of the land, and just to have these open spaces where we can disconnect from our busy lives. When I come here, I think I'm so grateful to be able to have this space in my little city, in my busy metropolis city, so we can have a balance in our lives.
I think a lot of people in Federway, especially our newer citizens, don't realize that we have historical places in Federway, but we do have them. They're just kind of hidden. You have to know where they're at. We've only been a city since 1990. To me, it's important to show the public, to show our citizens, that we do have a history. We've been here for a long time. It might not have been a city for a long time, but we've been here for a long time.
And it's just an area that we would hope could continue teaching forest skills, environmental skills, as well as just a good place to unwind and gather, maybe flip the phone away for a bit and see what's around you. There's nothing like being there, and that's the value of keeping these old buildings. I mean, whether they're theaters or lodges, there's a presence to them when you step in that, it just emanates off these buildings at years of history and use and carry.
The camp has provided formative experiences for many over the years, and has the potential to continue as a meaningful and historic educational environment for the community if the right stewardship arrangement can be found.
It's always been used, not just Boy Scouts, but Girl Scouts, the local church communities, community meetings. They used to have sunrise services. There are so many uses that we just know that this property could continue on, it could pay for itself, we know that there's enough activities, both education-wise, community-wise, to make it viable and keep it into the future.
So, a quick thank you to all of my interviewees, and I just wanted to conclude by saying that the Washington Trust is interested in partnering not only with the local advocates who we've already been working with, but the council and, and any, anyone from the Boy Scouts and the, and the Kilworth Foundations, who's interested in trying to find a solution that will keep this land for its original purpose, which was scouting and outdoor education, and keep it as an open and historic asset for the city of Federway. So, thank you for your time.
Just a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Thank you very much, first of all. Great, great, great job.
Thanks.
Have you guys had any contact with the Kilworth family and trust?
Not successful contact. I was able to speak to a fiscal representative of the William Kilworth Foundation. There's actually two separate foundations. And the person I spoke to reiterated that their plan was for the property to help fulfill the mission of the foundation, and I have some notes about it in my email, if anyone would like to see those, but there was not any clear indication that that didn't also potentially include sale of the property and those proceeds going toward the foundation's mission. So, it was kind of very vague, vague comments from the foundation fiscal representative. It was, it was actually a woman who worked for the bank that is the fiscal representative, so it wasn't actually a foundation member. I, I know some of the local folks have tried to get ahold of the foundation. I also have tried a few different avenues. That is still something that is definitely in progress, so if anyone has any connections, please, let me know.
And Jennifer, we've tried as well.
Yeah.
We've got Brian Davis, who's been a longtime, or Director of Community Development, a longtime involved in, in Boy Scouts, in BSA, has been, you know, attempting to have that contact, and he was a, in contact with the Scouts, and then attempting contact. And while you're still at the podium, so, Brian, any, what was the most recent contact, or what was the nature of the contact or attempted?
The most recent contact were representatives of the Kilworth inquiring about the zoning of the property, what is, what the potential plans, if any, that the city had for it that was beyond just the zoning and comprehensive plan, and so that was the extent of the conversation, just basically a regulatory check of what the city has.
And can you remind everybody, what, what, how is it zoned?
It is zoned suburban estates, which is a residential five-acre minimum lot size for new, for new lots. So, it's, it's the most, closest thing that we have to open space, but it does allow for future division, should a property owner choose to do that.
I think we talked about this at some time prior. What is the, the value of the land? I mean, it's invaluable, but what is its?
Yeah, what it's appraised at at the current market, I'm not, I don't recall offhand. I think King County has it assessed for, I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, it's better, just be careful, instead of throwing out the wrong number, obviously.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you know off the top of your?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor, do you know?
I think it's 2.2 million or 2.5 million.
Boy, that seems way too low for that number.
Does seem very low.
Success value.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. You know what we're going to do, what we'll do between now and the next meeting is, Brian, at the next meeting on August 14th, can you come back and just report to us? And what I would ask, perhaps what we could do, you know what, before I say anything else, we've got to get Councilmember Moore in here. Councilmember Moore has been a passionate advocate on this issue. Did you have a question or a comment?
More of a comment.
Please.
Thank you. I do want to thank, I know that I reached out to the Deputy Mayor and asked her if she could add the work with the Agenda Setting Committee, which is one chair of a committee, and the Deputy Mayor, who also sits with the Mayor. I appreciate her efforts in getting this added to the agenda, so thank you, Susan, for that effort, I appreciate that. And I think it's good to be talking about these type of issues versus other issues. But Jennifer, I just wanted to say thank you for being here. I've been eagerly awaiting for this day, because the more that we can put you in a public presence, the more that the public is able to be aware of what's happening at City Hall, this being one of many issues. And, you know, I want to bring light to this issue, because I think it's, it's really important, and I, Suzanne, I think you did a brilliant job with your presentation up there. I appreciate every ounce of your words. They spoke to me, and of course, I see a lot of good, a lot of other wonderful people in the audience that have been a part of this, and I've been in many meetings with you guys on seeing what we can do to save this. And for me, while I was a Boy Scout member for a small period of time, it's really, what speaks to me is, in a world of development, and how everything is being built, this type of land is precious, absolutely precious. And, and so, obviously, I want to do everything I can, and I can continue to be committed of what needs to be done to protect this piece of land and to protect our history. When you watch those original footage, and I've done this many times when I first got my hands on it, what, a couple of years back, I just, it's phenomenal. It's phenomenal to watch the Boy Scouts members back in the day of the 30s. It's phenomenal to watch the Boy Scouts members back in the day of the 30s, you know? It's just, it's epic. And so, my thing is that I really hope that as a city, we're staying on top of what we can, of what's happening, because I just, I'm afraid we're gonna slip, something's gonna slip through the cracks, Mr. Mayor, and all of a sudden, now we're gonna have another developed land. And that is gonna make me angry, absolutely angry, because this land is valuable for so many reasons. And so, so thank you for your presentation, Suzanne. Thank you, Jennifer, and for your efforts. I know I enjoyed my meeting with you and Executive Director, and so, and I'll work with our Chair, Chairman Jesse Johnson with our Parks Committee. I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on this, and I'm curious about the action items that you suggested, Suzanne, and seeing, explore some of those items. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Recifah Dawson, and then the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just want to take this opportunity also to thank people in the audience who've worked diligently, like with Warehouser and this, because your information and what you're doing and everything is invaluable, and I personally just want to say thank you. My question then is, I know the council and the city is really interested and engaged in this. How about the school district, especially when we're talking about education? Could that be a good way or partnership to really make this space worth keeping and give it a better leverage at, for lack of better words, to keep it the way it is?
Oh, absolutely. And I think, I have not had any direct contact with the school district about this issue as of yet, but I think that the more partnerships, the better, and the more people who value this place, the more protected it will be. And so, in addition to all the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and other youth who have enjoyed this facility for the last, you know, 80-plus years, bringing in schoolchildren will only endear it more to the community. So, I absolutely would love to pursue that line of partnership. I don't know any, what type of financial investment the school district would be willing to make, but I think, you know, some of my colleagues and I have discussed, you know, setting up a new organization that could manage the property if that ends up being a viable option, and that could certainly be a healthy partnership with the school district to help get students to visit the site and kind of experience this magical place right in their own city.
Yeah, and I do think obviously that protection of the 82-year-old lodge is very important to the amphitheater. We've all been there, and so, that's obviously something. Before I go to the Deputy Mayor, Brian, did you want to say something real quick?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. So, I looked it up, and the property is 29.3 acres, and the current appraised value according to King County is 2.594 million.
Ah, great, okay. Thank you. And, well, actually, Deputy Mayor, first of all, great job on the video, and great job, Mary and Suzanne, as well. A great job. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for picking this and for picking the Warehouser property. Both are very special to my family, both pieces of property. When I looked at the video, I did such a great job talking. No, I'm just joking.
But you did.
I've been to Camp Kilworth many times. My family was very involved in scouting, and our son got his Eagle Award in the Rotary Lodge. It means a lot to us, and I always felt at peace on the property. And looking at the video, I felt at peace, which is just a very special, magical place, like you said. When my children were little, in the 90s, 80s and 90s, in the Federal Way School District, we had outdoor education, and the school district owned a piece of property over by Lakeland Elementary, in which we spent a week or so, and I can't remember what grade, I think it was fourth grade, but I'm not sure, where the kids had outdoor education. Well, we don't, that property doesn't exist anymore. I don't know if that's where Sequoia is or not, Sequoia Middle School. This would be perfect to bring outdoor education back. We are looking for things for our youth to do. We're looking for programs for our youth, and this property would be so important in providing different programs for our kids and even for adults, and I think it can make money. I don't see it as something that's gonna drain the bank. I think, I see it as something that can potentially make money. I see it, I'm hoping that the foundations will continue to want to do what Dr. Kilworth wanted and his wife, which was to provide outdoor education to scouts and to youth. And I'm hoping that the foundations still see that as a viable mission for the property. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Moore?
I just have a question. Brian, when someone makes that type of inquiry, based on your experience, what does that typically mean? Does that mean they're interested in making some sort of movement? Or, I mean, I know, I assume it can mean a lot of things, but in your experience, what does it mean when someone makes that type of inquiry?
Yeah, usually when there's a property changing hands, they want to get all the information that there possibly is on the property, and usually when they call the city, they want to get the information on zoning and development potential. So, that's not unusual to see that when it changes hands, or has potential to change hands like that.
Okay. Okay. Jennifer, thank you. I'm gonna actually ask, I am gonna ask Brian Davis, our Community Development Director, to reach out to you, and I think actually, I think it would be beneficial to make a formal inquiry and maybe a formal inquiry by letter to ask to sit down and just see what their plans are. I think we owe it to the community and the region to inquire. They've been, one of the things I've been talking to Brian about, and I'm not gonna put Brian on the spot, but one of the things that we've noticed is, obviously, the transition of this ownership has been ongoing for some time. It's been very difficult to really pin down exactly when that transfer was taking place. We were watching it very carefully, but the concern we had is that almost the harder we push or the harder the community pushes on this, the Kilworth Foundation seems to be kind of pushing back a little, but I think they want to keep their options open. But I think we have reached, and I think the council and this, obviously, your organization have made it very clear, I think the time to act is now to at least put our cards on the table and sit down and see where they're at, and see if they're willing to do that. Obviously, we can't force them to do so, but I think we need to make that effort. So, Brian, let's talk about that tomorrow, and then, so Jennifer, we're gonna work with you. Thank you very much and your organization. On behalf of everybody here, thank you very much. A great job to that organization. It was perfect. And now, I think it's a matter of, let's put our best foot forward, get a letter out there, and see if we can get a meeting and figure out where they're at. They may not be, you know, they've got, they do have property rights, and they may not want to do that, but we at least need to make the ask. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I just, I would ask in this process that we keep the Friends of Camp Kilworth, they're an important stakeholder, involved, and just be, keep them informed what's happening so that we're all on the same page.
Sure, actually, I think in that meeting, I would think, you know, Jennifer, you may be the, you know, obviously, we need a representative of the Friends of Camp Kilworth to maybe have a, not maybe, to have a representative in that sit-down as well. Okay? All right. Counsel, anything else on that? Very informative, a lot of great work. Thank you very much. It is, good job. It's a beautiful facility, and if you think about it being 82 years there, it's awesome. Yeah, it very is, yeah. Yeah, actually, we had a ceremony where there was a, there was an Eagle Scout ceremony. I went, and they filled up the amphitheater, and it was just absolutely, and then they utilized the lodge, and it was just awesome. And then I brought Ben there another time for a scouting event, so that's great. Okay, so, more to follow on that. All right, now we've got item C, Certificate of Appointment Diversity Commission. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have the honor of announcing two certificate of appointments. We have Meju Karashi, I think she just stepped out actually, for the Diversity Commission. So, I'd also like to invite Bobby Jennings to come forward to accept his certificate of appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, I know Bobby and Meju, both in the Federal Way Youth Action Team, so just really happy that they're both gonna be a part of our work at the city.
Bobby, did you want to say anything? All right. You sure? All right. Thank you very much for your service. Bobby does a lot in the community, especially with regard to youth sports and reaching out, so thank you, Councilmember. Okay, now, Certificate of Appointment, Parks and Recreation Commission. Oh, we had both of those at the same time? All right, all right. Thank you. You're ahead of me. Thank you. All right, item E, Certificate of Appointment, Northlake District Advisory Committee. Councilmember Copeng.
I would like to invite Darren Nash forward. He's taken some time off of the lake tonight to be here with us, but I don't think there's anybody on the lake that loves it more than he does. So, anyway, Darren, congratulations.
Darren, did you want to say anything?
No.
All right, well, thank you very much for your service. All right, and thank you, Councilmember. All right, Mayor's Emerging Issues Report. First, we've got, we had the other picture, but I wanted to make sure that we had such a picture of the fireworks. I have to tell you, for the folks that were there, it was just an absolutely stunning fireworks show, and it seemed like they had like three or four finales. It was really a great show. John, tell us about Red, White, and Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. Very happy to report that the 25th Annual Red, White, and Blues Festival was an overwhelming success. Attendance was great, bands were very, very good. The Air Force Band really added a lot by forming a horn section for some of the other bands that played after them. They also led the kids' parade, did a fantastic job, really added a lot. The fireworks, I'll echo what the Mayor said, were just fantastic, spectacular. They seem to do better every year, and we couldn't be happier with our fireworks company. Public had a great time, and behavior was just awesome, fantastic, very, worked with us on the pets and the tents really well, and really appreciated that. Food vendors were very busy and happy. Special big thanks to Federal Way Police Department, who provided all our security there, did a great job for everybody. South King Fire, all of the staff that worked so hard, all of you that were able to be there, so thank you so much. And the amazing part was, the Special Olympics were playing at 8:00 AM the very next morning, and it was like it never happened. So, special kudos to our Parks Maintenance crews, who worked throughout the night to get that done, and the park just shined like a new penny, and we really put our best foot forward during the same week as Red, White, and Blues. To have that type of a scope of an event was impressive.
So, John, not to put you on the spot, what time did you, so, we have this huge thing where over 20,000 people show up, and then we also have the fireworks show. What time did you leave that night?
I left about 1:30 in the morning, but we had many, many, many crew members still there. I offered to stay, but they didn't want to carry me, so I was done.
And how late, how late did our folks stay there, getting the place cleaned up?
They worked throughout the night and into the tournament the next morning. They were relieved at 10:00 AM in the morning, the very next morning. They came in at 3:00 and worked until 10:00.
It was really a superhuman effort. Not only did we have the Miles from Miso run, you know, first thing at 8:30, 8:30 in the morning, and the record number of people that started that, you know, that were involved in that race, but then going right into the all-day-long, you know, and then the preparation for that, and then we're, you know, and then the very next day, we do the Special Olympics. It's just, you know, big round of thank you for, to all your folks.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that along, and they'll be very happy. It was an honor to do that, and the Special Olympics is close to our heart, inclusion's close to our hearts, what we do, and so, we were excited to be able to show Federal Way's best foot forward, so.
John, I don't have it on the emerging issues, but can you tell everybody about movie night? Where, when, what the details are at Town Square Park?
Yes, the 28th of July, so it's two Saturdays from now. That will be, starts at dusk. The movie is Coco. It is 100% free. It's a great show, encourage families, come on out. It's a great family movie. It'll be a ton of fun, and it's at Town Square Park, so we'll see you there, and we'll have popcorn for you, and you're welcome to bring a cooler with soft drinks and things like that, so come and have a great time.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Could you talk about the Summer Concerts Series?
Summer Concerts Series started last week. We had a children's concert on Wednesday at Town Square Park, went very, very well. And there is a show tomorrow night at Steel Lake Park, 7:00 Steel Lake Park. Again, these concerts are free. The band is supposed to be really fun. I'm bummed out I can't see it. It's a Motown band, so it should be a ton of fun. And, you know, it's a beautiful setting. The lake is right behind the stage. It doesn't get much prettier than that. Again, free, really good music. Come early, bring a picnic dinner, have a great time, enjoy the park, bring the kids. We want to see you out there.
Can I ask one question? Is Shakespeare, is there a Shakespeare production?
Shakespeare is in the park this year, too. I'm not sure on the date. I apologize for that I can't get that to you, but we do have Shakespeare in the park this year, and that will be on a Wednesday night, I believe during the same concert time, so maximize attendance.
Very good. Great job, John.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. A lot going on in the community, and our Parks Department is really just adds a great, Saturday, August 4th, I hear, for the Shakespeare in the Park. Thank you very much. Okay, now, we've got Deputy Chief Neil to talk about fireworks. You know, when we started the fireworks show at Celebration Park years ago, it was really a trade-off or a benefit to the community because fireworks at Federal Way are illegal, and as we all know. And so, but, as we also know, there are those in the community that decide they're not gonna follow the law, and that's why we have enforcement for that, and I wanted to make sure that we had a report. We did receive, I received, I'm sure the council received, some feedback in regard to illegal fireworks discharge. Wanted to make sure we got a report from the Deputy Chief about this. Chief Neil?
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, I have a brief report on the fireworks enforcement. It was a great event, and John, and many people did a fantastic job with the event. Every year, we try to give an after-action report as far as the fireworks enforcement is concerned. We make a lot of effort to both educate people in a variety of ways, whether it's through social media, whether it's through our code-red phone messages and that sort of thing, and our reader boards around town to make sure that people are fully aware that fireworks, all fireworks are illegal in Federal Way, and the best way to see them is to come to this great event that we have every year. So, I have, this has broken down this report in a couple of fairly simple ways, and what we do is, we actually take an eight-day, seven-night period of time every year so that we can kind of compare apples to apples when we talk about calls for service and how many there were, and we just compare it to one year back. So, this compares what happened this year to last year. So, again, during this timeframe from June 28th to July 5th, last year, our total calls for service, and what that means is, that's all the calls that come to the police during that eight-day period, was 2,039 calls for service. This year, there were 2,012 calls for service. So, you'll see, there was a few less in that category, but it's fairly consistent, and it is every year. Then we break it down into fireworks-coded. In other words, all the calls that come in that have the word fireworks, if they have something to do with that type of a call. And in 2017, we had 214 fireworks, calls for service during that same time period. And this year, we had 238, so you'll see somewhat of an increase. One thing that I will say about the, one of the efforts that we made this year is, we really encouraged people in the city to call our non-emergency number for fireworks complaints, and that's something that we really pushed this year through all of those ways that I explained, and that might explain why there were a few more actual calls for service. Then we broke it down to just the 4th of July, that 24-hour period. So, on the 4th of July last year, there were 323 calls, total calls for service, and this year, 352 total calls for service just on that day, that 24-hour period. And then those that were specifically coded fireworks, in 2017, there were 117, and this year, 147 that were coded fireworks just on that day. So, as a result of our, we have teams in the field, we have teams that are at the event, we have major teams that are at Steel Lake Park, and then the city as a whole during that time period, trying to mitigate the illegal fireworks activity that occurs there. So, in 2017, this is enforcement or citations charges. We had 24 charges and 10 warnings in 2017, and then this year, 20 charges and seven warnings. So, again, relatively flat, but that gives you an idea about the enforcement. I don't have a question. I just, I just want to make, talk about my experience that night. I was at Town Square Park, and then I went home, and it started around 9:00, and I had the telephone number for the police department, and I tried to call and leave a message and everything like that, but there were so many calls that I couldn't take a recording or anything else like that. So, I got in my car and drove around. My neighborhood was fantastic. Most of the people were probably at Town Square Park, because there were hardly any lights on, but I drove over a couple of blocks, and I could see where it was all coming from, and they were just shooting off fireworks in their backyards. They had company, and then I started going down the hill to get back to 21st Street, and I saw two more houses that were doing it, and then I saw a police car coming up the street and pulling into that driveway, and I said, "Good, some people are going to get an expensive citation."
Yeah.
I really, and I know you guys were so busy, because you couldn't leave a message or anything. There were so many calls that night. From 10:00 until midnight, it went off continuously all around us, in my neighborhood, none in my, none from my neighborhood, but all around us. My poor dog wouldn't come out from behind the couch. He wouldn't even come up to me or anything else. He was so darn scared, and I really don't think I want to stay in this city for another 4th of July, because I don't think it's fair to the animals. And I know the police were trying to do as much as you could, but it was, we were just overwhelmed with calls. So, I think, again, warning people, make it a $500 fine, make it really hurt, for heaven's sakes. I mean, you can go down and see beautiful fireworks at Celebration Park, and I don't hear that noise at all, but when it's going off the way these people were shooting things off, and two years ago, it was, it was around our neighborhood, and I actually bought a couple of packages that hadn't been exploded here to show. Make it $500 fine. Make it really hurt people if they're going to do that. You can go down and see a beautiful fireworks down there, and you can still have your picnics at home and do everything else, but I'm not sure I want to stay in Federalway for another 4th of July, to tell you the truth. But, thank you for the work that you guys did. I know you were busy all that night.
Sure, and on that note, as we know, we changed those fines. It used to be 100, 200, 300, and the very first offense is 300 this year.
I know.
But I also believe you're talking about people going and watching the great event that we have, and I think the number of people that John talked about, I think there were, we estimate over 20,000 people, and I think it increases every year, and hopefully, that'll, that'll continue to capacity, I guess, but I, that's the place to go see the fireworks.
Yes, it is, and when I lived in Arlington Heights, Illinois, I used to walk to the park and go watch the fireworks, but I do think, I know you guys were terribly busy that night. I think, really make the fine hurt, and let them know that there's a place to go watch them, but not in their backyard.
Right. All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. Were there any injuries or fires due to fireworks, is there?
None that I'm aware of.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. It was a great night. It was a great night at the event. It was a great night in the city. It was a great night in Steel Lake Park. We really had no major incidents on the 4th of July.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Chief. I have a question. Looking at your number between 2017 and 2018, there was an increase in firework-related call of almost 14%. However, the enforcement piece, the part where you give out the warrants and the ticket, is actually, actually dropped almost 19%. Is there a reason for that?
I don't think I can give you an actual reason for it. I think there's a lot of independent variables at play here. It depends on where the calls are, where the, where the officers, if you will, migrate to, depending on what's coming into us, because we try to address them as, obviously, as quickly as possible while someone is actually deploying fireworks. We want to get there and try to, try to stop that. So, I don't think I can give you any kind of answer on that, other than the fact that the calls in the city as it is moves our officers around.
And they need to be caught in the act, actually. That, I think that's the hard part, is, is it's not just about somebody telling us. The officer has to actually witness this occurring.
And that's the other thing, and the other thing to remember, if you're in your backyard, let's say, it's not, officers aren't going to come and barge into your backyard, if you will. We will come try to contact you, but it's difficult to, by the time we get there, if people disperse, obviously, now, we're not going to chase them down for fireworks.
All right. All right, council, anybody, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, now, on to Chief Andy Wong, talk about National Night Out on August 7th. So, I, why don't we talk about this real quick? For, and this is the next item on the agenda, but let me just explain as the chief gets set up. Normally, our city council meetings are on the first and the third Tuesday of the month. Because of National Night Out, we're actually, we've moved the council meeting to the second week in August, and we normally do not have a second meeting in August, so people can go on vacation. So, the one and only city council meeting in August is August 14th, the second Saturday of the month.
Saturday?
Tuesday, sorry. Tuesday. All right, okay, sorry.
You'll be by yourself.
Tuesday. All right, all right, Tuesday. I'm focused on Saturdays, on Tuesday. So, can you tell us about the first Tuesday of the month, National Night Out?
I will, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. I've been asked to brief you and the public about our National Night Out event, which is scheduled for Tuesday, August 7th. That's exactly three weeks from today. The time for the events are between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and the purpose of the National Night Out event is to strengthen neighborhood spirit and police-community partnership. This is a great way for our community to come together and take a stand against crime, and this will, really a fun event for our citizens, to share some food with their neighbors and to have some good conversation. We will be partnered again this year with South King Fire and Rescue, our long-trusted partner in our community. We currently have 27 neighborhoods that have signed up, and we estimate that we'll end up with our normal number, which is around 35, 40 neighborhoods by the date of the event. If our residents are interested in organizing an event, they can, there's a link on the city's main webpage. You can sign up or contact Lindsey Spree at the police department, her contact information is on the, on the screen. The master event list for all the neighborhoods will be provided to all the council members prior to the event date, so you could choose which neighborhoods you'd like to go visit on that particular day. So, it should be a lot of fun. We have a lot of participation from our officers, our civilian staff, and our police department for this event, so we do allocate quite a bit of resource, which we will go to every neighborhood. A police representative will go to every neighborhood, and the fire department tries to do the same. So, we'll be out there and forced to make this event a success.
All right. Chief and I have this, certain locations we like to go to, and we know who's got the best fried chicken and best, the best locations. It's about pacing yourself, you don't want to, anyway, so, great locations, great neighborhoods. It's a lot of fun. I know, I know.
I'm not going to say a word.
I'm working on it. Okay, all right. All right, that's our report. Thank you very much, chief.
Mayor, I think there's a.
Would you please approach your podium real quick for a question?
No, that's cheating. I'm not going for the best fried chicken.
All right, thanks. I know, but there's one place. I just, I've got to go every year. Anyway, they've got, they've got one professional cook that, but one year, we got there too early and missed it. Got to get there at the, at the right time. Life's about timing. All right, all right, now, we've got council committee reports. We've got our finance committee. This is something that we're starting to do, you guys. Normally, what has happened previously is, at the end of the meeting, council gives their reports, and the committee chairs talk about what's going on in their committees. Unfortunately, by the time we get there, oftentimes, it's a little past 10:00 or right around 10:00, so we've mixed things up. The deputy mayor and I, and councilmember Johnson on the agenda setting, have been working on making sure that people understand what's happening at the committee, but that's really where a lot of heavy lifting occurs in regard to things coming through the council before it gets on, gets on our agendas for the regular meetings. So, that being said, what we're going to do is run through the committee chairs, talk about what's going on in their committee. So, the chairman of our finance committee, Frederick, Chairman DuKlo.
Thank you very much. I'm going to concentrate on something that we came up with in the Federac meeting, but it's a special meeting that we designed to talk about revenue ideas for the city, and we had our meeting, our first meeting on the 9th, and we came up with a list of about 20-some-odd possible things, and it's a draft list, and we went into the meeting with no restraints. Nothing was too good, and nothing was too bad. We wanted to throw everything up there that we could think of, and it's over 20 items, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to pass, pass these down to everybody.
I've already looked at mine. Good job.
And so, our next thing, and I actually went over to the chamber today and asked them to come to the next meeting, because I want to have some business people look at things, too, and give us their thoughts. So, our next meeting is going to be August 13th at 5, it goes from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. We put time limits on it, so that we don't, so that we actually are forced to work and think quickly, and hopefully, by then, we'll finalize the draft, and then the next meeting after that, we'll try to break it out and then prioritize the ones that we think are most viable. So, I'm really pleased at what we're doing to try and generate ideas to bring more, more revenue into the city, and so, people are welcome to come. We did have some, some public people there, and they sat at the table with us and participated as well as everybody else, so.
And one, one thing is, at the next meeting, I'll ask, many of these are things that were sort of in the works in regard to fees or things we're working on with the score jail, and so, what I'll ask is, is, the finance director, Adey Arulolo, for everybody else, to give you a status on where we're at with particular things that we're in the process of actually putting into the budget that I'll propose in early September.
And that's great, because then we can take that off the list.
Right.
And look at these other things, so.
Yeah, there are certain things that were absolutely in the works. There are certain things that we can't do, and then, so, let's make sure we narrow that list down, so it's, we're spending our time wisely.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we want to do, and we've set aside four different meetings for this, so.
Right.
So, the first one was just sit there and throw everything out, and now, we'll start to hopefully winnow that down to stuff, and then, and then come back with, with whatever else to the, to the council.
Very good, thank you. Adey, let's talk about that tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, so, just with regard to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Moore, Chairman Moore, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes, you know, I'm, I've been married for just about two years, Mr. Mayor, and I've learned that sometimes it's good to take vacations that'll make the wife happy. So, I missed the last LTAC meeting. I went to Arizona.
The wife?
The husband and the wife.
Thank you.
So, I always like having Deanie next to me. She always keeps me on target there.
I'm not sure women like to be called the wife.
Or my wife, so.
That's better.
Yes, so, but what I can share is, as we all know, we've had the Special Olympics here in our community, here in the state of Washington, in Seattle, and that was just, was just incredible. I know that Sarah had, Sarah is my wife, we had some free time during lunchtime, so, we had a date at Celebration Park, and we watched one of the softball games, and we ended up watching, watching Team Washington, and their second round, they, I believe they won. I hope, I hope that's right, and so, that was just a lot of fun to be in that atmosphere and to have all eyes on Federalway for the, for the sports that were taking place in our community, and it's just really kind of epic to think about, you know, what type of impact are we getting in our city when this happens, and our, and I've heard people saying that, oh, we have enough hotels, we don't need any more hotels. Well, our hotels are booked when things like that happen. Our restaurants are full of people from all sorts of different states coming in, and that helps Federalway, and all other amenities in Federalway were being utilized by our guests. So, it's really kind of, it's fun to think about all the great things that are happening in our community and to know that, you know, tourism is strong in Federalway. So, also, with the PAC and the new management system that we have there, I know that people often wonder, what is that big building over there that's close to Town Square Park? And so, now, we have wayfinding signs that point to where the Performing Arts and Events Center is, so those signs have gone up, along with other amenities as well, that showcases too. So, also, I also just want to do a shout-out to Tim Johnson. For one person in the Economic Development Department is pretty incredible. He makes things move, and he is the staff member that is assigned to my committee, and so, he just, he does amazing things, and I just want to do a little shout-out to him, and thank you for all of his efforts and all the things that we do, and of course, thank you to the committee members that serve along with me, and with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Great, okay. Councilmember Copeng or Chair Copeng of the Land Use Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Land use, obviously, we deal with real glamorous things like roads and buildings, and, you know, there's a lot of things that I think impact our lives on a daily basis, and no, tonight, we're going to have a presentation on the pavement management system program over, it's just basically is an overview of the whole program. I think it's really important, I think, for us to understand the investment required to maintain our roads at the conditions they're at right now. We have some of the best roads in South King County, or I think in all of King County, but if we don't continue to invest in maintenance of those roads, they are going to continue to deteriorate, and it's interesting, in this presentation you'll see tonight, that we need to continue to look at ways to, to bring revenue in, to take care of things like our roads. We also had a very, I think, engaged conversation around the self-storage ordinance that we're going to put in place at some point in the near future, possibly with First Reunion Night, and again, I think that we're looking at our city and looking at what we want our future to be in 20 years, and I think it's important for the council to, to be able to have that discussion in, in cooperation and in partnership with the Planning Commission, to find the best solutions for our city long-term. We also, Rick Perez, in the last meeting, talked about our local safety plan. I don't know how many of you've noticed, but you can come to intersection now, and there'll be a yellow when it's a green light, and there's a, and a left-hand turn lane. Sometimes, that lane is going to be green to allow you to go. Sometimes, it can be flashing yellow. That was one of the innovations that we've made to keep traffic flowing. One of the things that we've noticed is that sometimes people are crossing in a crosswalk, and when you're taking a left, a left-hand turn lane, you may not see them. So, one of the things we're looking at, among other things, is taking a look at making sure those lights, that light does not flash yellow when somebody's in the crosswalk, or has pushed the green, the light or the button to cross. So, little things like that, we'll continue to look at ways to innovate and continue to keep, keep things safe in the city as far as traffic is concerned. So, there's a lot of good work going on. The last thing I wanted to say is that our next meeting is August 6th. For those of you that are intrigued with all the things I've described, please come. Thanks.
All right, thank you. A great report. Okay, and then, for our Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So, our last meeting was last Tuesday, July 10th. We had a great conversation and update regarding the homelessness task force, so Yard in Widenfeld was there to deliver the report. I just wanted to give a quick update. So far, the task force has had seven meetings since mid-April. They've discussed a needs-based assessment in Federalway, current services and existing programming, and also the causes of homelessness, and created subgroups to talk about it in their subcommittees. And so, the four subgroups that they've created are the current state of homelessness in Federalway, preventative resources and services, crime-public safety, and then finally, mental and behavioral health, drug addiction. So, those are the four subgroups that the task force is working on. So, they'll continue to deliver reports. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for having the task force deliver reports on a monthly basis to our committee, and so, that's the commitment that they've made to us as a committee. The next meeting is next, actually, Tuesday, August 14th, so it'll actually be before the next city council meeting at 5:00. So, that'll be next door in the Hailobos Room. We'll be talking about the task force. We'll also be talking about the sprinkler ordinance for commercial businesses, so we'll have a presentation from South King Fire, and then finally, we'll have a presentation from King County Housing Authority around housing in Federalway, and then source-of-income discrimination. So, thank you to Councilmember Assefa Dasan for having someone from her business come and talk. So, yeah, that's going to be the next meeting, so Tuesday, August 14th, 5:00, right before the next city council meeting.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, a lot of, a lot of work being done at the committee level.
A lot of work being done at the committee level before it reaches this full City Council. Okay. Now for the most important part of the evening, citizen comment, and where I note that you have knocked, checked the box for five minutes, I will attempt to note that. First, we've got, so I'll literally know who's on the, who's on deck. We've got Mary Ellis first, and then Stephen Smith, Tashana Nash, Rich Shockley, Jacqueline Garcia, Lawson Bronson. That's who we've got up, so be ready, please. We all know the rules.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Farrell and Deputy Mayor Honda and all you council members for getting the historic preservation, trust for historic preservation on the agenda. And I can't thank the Historical Society enough, the Federalway Historical Society, and especially Suzanne, because she did allow through and submit that application. And we just greatly appreciate the fact that they support and recognize this property for the value that we've been extolling for the last, how many years? But I also am very concerned, and I know property rights and its potential open space, but on October third of 2017, there was a report that basically reviewed the property as community parks. That's never been pulled, because we knew it would never meet the criteria for a community park. It does meet most of the criteria for open space. So even for potential open space, again, that's our second step, to get it recognized for what its true value is. And we feel like, in developing some type of plan, partnerships, we have to have the true recognition for the property. So first step, people recognize it, that it is historically important, but it is definitely, and always has been, open space. And I know that's a potential designation, but I really would like that pulled, and the council member to reassess. It never was community park, would never fit it, it was never asked for to be community park. So we just feel like, in order to move forward, we have to be clear with what our hopes are, and we know that these environmental parks can make money. And working with school districts, individuals, we just, that's part of our plan, you know, to be like Snake Lake, Shadow Lake, that they work very hard to teach people and preserve these pieces of property. So I thank you very much, but I really, really would like you to relook at the criteria for the parks criteria that establishes what its potential really is. And it does meet nine out of twelve for open space. So I thank you again, for somebody who does not like to be on camera. I'm always hanging around, and I don't like it because it tells me how old I really am.
Thanks, Mary. And thank you for your advocacy. All right. Stephen Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Smith, and I have to say this, or I get fined tomorrow by the Deputy Mayor. I am with the Federalway Corners, and I'm here to talk about Salmon Bake. It is actually, huh?
Good job.
Good job? Okay. I feel a whole lot better right now. Twenty-seventh, we are here to talk about Salmon Bake. It is coming up very quickly. The salmon has been ordered, the ban has been ordered. We are trying a couple of new things today, this year. We are going to be highlighting some programs that we do support. They're going to be able to get up and talk about, the bag program will be one of them. And we just now booked the Special Olympics to come, and because of some partnerships within the community, we able to actually buy them their dinner, and they will be able to come and talk about the inclusion program, and that is done at the community center. So, and that's one of the programs that we support in our club, so. There's a bunch of people here that have tickets. I have tickets, too, if you need to sell. You know, they're stuck, they're stuck in the chairs, I'm not, so you can buy tickets for me or Steve Neal, if he's still in the building. In the back corner, he's got tickets, too, so we would like to see everybody come. We are still looking for servers. I have Jim down, I have Mark down, and I have Susan down, so. All right. Anybody else on the council one to volunteer? Martin does? Okay. Thank you. I'll get with you. Scholarships.
We can't sell our tickets from here, but exactly. All right. Thank you, Stephen. Good job. Stephen, how many years is it now? Isn't it like sixty-one years? Sixty-two years?
I have been corrected. It is the sixty-second. I said the sixty-second, whatever I did. And people in the community are very quick to correct my spelling, so it is the sixty-second this year.
It is such a great, you know, it really does. Sometimes this community really feels like, instead of being, you know, we've got about a hundred thousand people in the city, just about there, it really feels like a smaller town when you're by Steel Lake, and it's a beautiful day, right on the lake, and the salmon's cooking, and it really kind of come together. It's just, I would encourage anybody who has an opportunity to come to the Salmon Bake and.
Also, and one quick thing, I have thirty-seven seconds left, is that thank you to the Rotary. We were able to actually invite three of the retirement centers to come down and join us for dinner, so that's great.
All right. Thank you. And Tashana Nash, we've used all your time. No, I'm just kidding. Okay. Tashana, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tashana Nash, and my husband Darren and I are fifteen-year residents of Federalway. I'm serving on the board of Save Warehouse or Campus, a grassroots organization formed over two years ago. We're a team of neighbors, community members, and activists who believe in a healthy, beautiful, and thriving Federalway. Tonight, though, I'm speaking to you as a mother, a mother who fell in love with this community over fifteen years ago and knew then that I wanted to raise my family here. In 2002, Darren and I drove through the Warehouse or Campus to check out a little fixer-upper in the North Lake neighborhood. The house wasn't much, and there were no sweeping lake views, but it felt like an opportunity. And Darren did what he did best. He fixed it up, made it home, and we became part of the neighborhood where we want to live forever. Fast forward fifteen years, we're in our third house in the neighborhood. It's another fixer-upper, and our youngest daughter is Grace, and she's now eleven. She'll be starting sixth grade at Sequoia Middle School this September, and she'll be riding the bus that picks up along, it picks up and drops off along Thirty-third Place South and South Three Thirty-sixth Street. We're not naive. We know that if Warehouse A and Warehouse B are approved, we can expect up to sit four hundred semi-trucks entering and exiting very, in very close proximity to our home. This is not counting the other four hundred semi-trucks that are expected to be part of the Green Line Business Park application. We know that when there's nowhere to go on Highway eighteen, the trucks will cut through our neighborhood, and they'll be driving and or parked within steps of Grace Nash, right here. City Council, I understand your influence is limited on the permit approval process, but I ask that you do what you can to continue being an advocate for the people who love Federalway. To the companies out there that are looking for office space, I want you to know that there is no place like this campus and the historic, award-winning, former Warehouse or Building. There's talent here. We have two daughters attending Todd Beamer High School this year, and I can personally vouch for the amazing kids there. They're smart, they're passionate, they're loyal, and they're hungry for opportunity. And to our community, for those of you here and watching on TV and online, and for those following the Save Warehouse or Campus Facebook page, we need your help. It's go time, and we need your ideas, your passion, and your financial support to hire the experts needed in traffic, hydrology, and forestry, to build a case for responsible development and for preserving as much of this property as possible. We want to build a case for the future of Federalway, a place where our kids will want to raise other families, and where we, along with the lifelong friends that we have made here, can watch our grandchildren grow up. Thank you.
Rich Shockley, and then Jacqueline Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Rich Shockley. I've met many of you. I'm the Senator Director for Highline College Economic Development. The two programs are Start Zone and the Small Business Development Center. And tonight, in interest of time and to highlight a couple of points, I wrote down some notes, and I'd like to just read it to you. The City of Federalway and Highline College have a longstanding relationship. We partner on two economic development programs and recently a higher education partnership between the city, the University of Washington, and Highline College. As most of you know, the City of Federalway has funded our economic development program for nearly ten years. For one of our programs, the Small Business Development Center, the city funding is used to match federal dollars, which magnifies the city's contribution by two, allowing us to serve a greater number of businesses. Without the match to federalway dollars, to federal dollars, our program loses both the federal dollars and the local match. In the case of our Start Zone program, the city's community block grant contribution, along with King County Community Block Grant dollars, allows us to deliver a similar service to low, moderate, disadvantaged, and underserved business individuals. Over the past ten years, the work of the SBDC and Federalway has resulted in delivered service of three hundred and sixty-eight distinct businesses and individuals, helping them secure over thirteen point seven million in loans and owner capital contribution, creating a hundred and twenty-two jobs and starting twenty-seven businesses. For the same period, our Start Zone program serves, on average, sixty-two businesses or individuals per year, resulting in twenty-five business starts, nine business expansions, and about thirty-five jobs to primarily immigrant and solopreneurs. Funding from the city is different for each of these programs. For the SBDC, city funding comes forty-five percent from the general fund and fifty-five percent from the community block grant, capital funding for economic development. As mentioned earlier, both of these contributions match federal dollars, thereby doubling Federalway's investment to maximize funding for economic development in the city. To provide a measurable return that the city receives on dollars invested in the SBDC, I'd like to reference an independent study by Dr. James Christman of Mississippi State University. In his study, he documents that for every dollar invested in the SBDC, four dollars and seventy-seven cents incremental tax revenue is received. The city funding for our Start Zone program comes exclusively from the community block grant, capital funding, and there are no federal dollars matched. Recently, we have been notified that it is unlikely there will be any capital funding through CDBG for 2019 or '20. The community block grant dollars are being used instead to contribute a hundred and ninety thousand dollars towards debt service payments on the Performing Arts Center. The loss of these funds will have a significant impact on our community college economic development programs and our ability to serve Federalway business community as well as underserved and disadvantaged entrepreneurs. We understand the budget shortfall that you're facing and recognize the difficult decision that faces council and staff, but we do ask that the city look for ways to, with Highline, to sustain these programs. We would ask that you look, as you review the budget, that you would work diligently to sustain our programs that serve our business community, and that you would look for creative ways to take advantage of the federal dollars made available to the city through the Small Business Administration. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Okay. Jacqueline Garcia, then Lawson Bronson, Dana Holloway, Lori Seacrest, Lamont Stiles, Lynn Idahosa. Jacqueline?
Yes. Good evening. I'm going to hand out some.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Garcia. I'm the micro-business specialist and coordinator and instructor for the Start Zone program in Spanish for the Latino community. Since we launched on the first courses in Spanish, the response has been great. We have an average of forty to fifty undeplicated entrepreneurs taking my workshops every quarter, different points, especially here in Federalway. So tonight, I would like to advocate for the program Start Zone and share with you some information about Start Zone. So generally, the type of business or services that immigrants and refugees are, or refugees are opening in the area, that kind of businesses are janitorial, construction, and food industry like food truck catering restaurants. Start Zone's vision is a community where everybody has the opportunity to become financially self-sufficient by participating in a diverse, strong, and sustainable local economy. In pursuit of this vision, Start Zone helps South King County's residents achieve financial self-sufficiency by providing educational workshops at one-on-one assistance at not cost. Our curriculum includes business plan, marketing, basic finance, sales platforms, business legal structure, and we have partnerships at the state level with the different agencies like DOR, LNI, DOH, DOT. As well, we connect our clients with pro bono services and local nonprofits in order to benefit them. And I would like to share with you a client story. This family came to my workshops with the goal to open their own food truck. This family have special children, they are low-income, and the partner lost his job due to the fire here in Federalway in May on 2017. So licensing permits and all the process took twenty months for them to finally open their own food truck. They are finally, we are in the final step, so in the next two weeks, they are going to open their food truck. As well, I would like to share a testimony from a Federalway resident, a business owner. I started my own business because I have an illness. I got fired from my previous job due to my high absinths because of my illness. Thanks to Start Zone, because I learned a lot in this course, this knowledge will help my business. Jared Z from the Mexican Grocery Store located close to here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Lawson Bronson, then Dana Holloway.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, I think you all received a letter from the Planning Commission, or from three of us Planning Commissioners. I would like to explain to you why there's only three signatories. It was our understanding that if we had four of it, it would be perceived as a violation of the meeting, so that's the reason why only three of us were on the letterhead. At the LUTC meeting, Councilmember Tran asked a good question. He said, what's the difference between a cost for chain-link fence and wood fencing? And I went back and did a little bit of research. As you may know, I'm an engineer and stuck in that mood. If you, if you write chain-link fence is one, then it's about one point five for the cheapest wood fence, and it can run up to three or four without a whole lot of effort. And if you really want to be crazy, you can spend ten times the amount on a wooden fence. The thing that challenges me is the purpose of a fence is to keep people out of your property. And I think that we, as a city, can ask a person to provide a safe fence, but I think the design guidelines are arbitrary. What you think is pretty and what I think is pretty are two totally different things. And if we're trying to enforce pretty, I just have a real problem with that. One of the challenges I have is that, since we've raised this issue, I spend a lot of time driving back and forth to Tacoma and other areas, and I look at fences. And I got to tell you, the wood fences, to me, after three or four years, and as they're maintained well, are no prettier nor uglier than chain-link. So I want to reiterate the stand of the Planning Commission that we vote six to zero to ask you not to impose these design guidelines. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Dana Holloway, and then Lori Seacrest, and then Lamont Stiles.
Hi. My name is Dana Holloway, and I'm going to repeat the public comment that I gave earlier at the Special City Council meeting, where the Port of Seattle presented their Sustainable Airport Master Plan, which continues increasing the number of commercial and cargo airplane flights for the next fifteen years through the year 2034. Hopefully, I can maybe give some insight to some people that you hadn't thought about it. The majority of people, myself included, focus on airplane noise, because that's the most obvious. However, environmental toxic impacts from aircraft emissions and pollution cause diseases in humans, and in flora, plants, and fauna, animals, and shortens lifespans. Exposure to loud noise from living under a flight path for a long period of time may increase the risk of developing high blood pressure or having a stroke. The most common causes of death due to air pollution from airplanes are cardiovascular and respiratory diseases. and respiratory diseases, including lung cancer, according to the UN's World Health Organization. Other health impacts are brain damage and brain cancer. The toxicity in the soil making it dangerous, the toxicity is in the soil coming down from the airplanes, making it dangerous to consume fruits and vegetables grown in your own garden or yard if you live underneath the flight path or where the wind blows. The next portion of the statement I took or borrowed from a comment a gentleman made at the last Highline Forum. He was an expert in chemical engineering and environmental. Toxicology studies and risk assessment studies, including exposure pathways, how it gets into your body, and ecological risk to flora and fauna and human health risk must be done in the communities around the airport and flight paths, and the data evaluated and published before any increase in the number of airplane operations, which is port speak for arrivals and departures. The port's master plan should be rejected until this is done. This is our lives, this is our health. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Lori Seacrest, then Lamont Stiles, then Lynn Idahosa, and then Marquise Hale.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Susan Honda, council members, staff, friends, and neighbors. My name is Lori Seacrest, the proud president of the Save Warehouse or Campus and a federal way citizen for 13 years. It's been several months since I've actually stood before you, so tonight, I do so with just a few thanks, congratulations, and words of support and encouragement. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and Councilman Mark Copang for attending the North Lake Fourth of July Parade and the Hot Dog Social afterwards. Your support is noticed and appreciated, and there truly is no place like North Lake. Congratulations to Darren, although we left, for the appointment to the North Lake Management District Advisory Committee. He certainly is the right person for this job. For those of you who don't know Darren, he spends a lot of time on our lake fishing, or at least pretending to fish. And I wanted to thank Jennifer and the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation for sharing the Camp Kilworth nomination announcement tonight. It was May of 2017 that the former Warehouse or Campus was nominated as the number one most endangered places for the state for 2017. So congratulations to the supporters of Camp Kilworth for its 2018 nomination. Two years in a row for properties in our city says something for both the passionate citizens we have here and the historic significance that these two properties share. The city of federal way should be proud of both properties and do everything in their power to historically preserve and protect them. The Save Warehouse or Campus has made significant strides over the past two years, but we still know we have a lot of work to do before achieving our visions of protecting the west shoreline of North Lake, the Rhododendrum Garden, and the Bonzi Collection, preserving the wildlife habitat and the crucial watershed lands, the forests, the meadows, and the campus, as well as its trails and public access to them, and maintaining the character of the campus through high-quality development that blends with the environment and brings economic and lifestyle benefits to the community. Or as George Warehouser stated during his interview for the 2017 nomination, "That the new uses not totally be incompatible to the quality of that which is already there." I am confident that together, the Save Warehouse or Group, the city, county, state, and IRG, with the help of our Forterra, can and will find a way to continue the Warehouser legacy of this campus as being something of beauty, significance, and value. We must save this gym for our community and the region for many future generations to enjoy. So my words of encouragement to the Camp Kilworth supporters is to continue to believe, like the Save Warehouse or Group has with the former Warehouse or Property, that your property is worth the time and energy it will take to save, because the words, to take the words of Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Congratulations again to Camp Kilworth.
Thanks, Lori. Lamont Stiles.
Hello, council members, mayor, deputy mayor, citizens. I'm just happy to be here. It's good to see all the citizens that come out and fight for what they believe in because that's what federal way is about, you know.
Stephanie, five minutes. Sorry. Sorry.
Okay. There's a problem. Even if it's something that I don't know about, I definitely support different people's plights for our community. So that brings me to what I came up here to speak about. I'm here to represent Record Genius and our media group and just our viewpoint from what we've seen. I've been here for a little over 15 years, and we just want to address some of the things that are going on in the community as far as homelessness, the drug addiction situation, and things of that nature. But it all revolves around, I think, around education, because like a lot of the things that are going on, a lot of people don't know about. A lot of people don't know about the committee meetings. A lot of people don't know about the budget. A lot of people don't know about the things that, the great things that you guys are doing, because it is a balance, right? Because we live in a community of, a very diverse community, so there is a balance of needs for this community. So with that being said, we had just a couple of questions that, and at the end, I'll bring it all together, but as far as like the budget with the police cars and whatnot, I know the police are being hired, but is it, is the, are the cars like necessary or final? Because like if I have a budget in my household and we buy a car every five years, and then my son needs to go to tutoring, or he needs to go to something else, if it's not in the budget, then we're not going to get a new car if our car already works. So we're just wanting, when we talk about the money and the budget and things of that nature, we're all scrambling, trying to figure out how to get programs and get money for programs, but we're just wondering, like what's being done with the money that we already have? So that was one of the things. And then the homeless task force, like as far as like the timeline. So we put together a timeline, but then the report is due after the budget is actually due. So it's like, okay, like is there not a budget for the homelessness, or are we not going to attack it or address it, or are we going to address it in a different way? Because I really, or we believe that it's more of a state issue than it is just a city or a federal way issue, because all of these people are not coming from federal way. So what would be the timeline accountability when we are doing things? Are we keeping in mind what other things that we have as far as the budget? That's a very important thing. Then we looked at like the city council or the King County Council, what are they doing for federal way? We know that we have alliances and whatnot, but what are those alliances getting us as far as bringing resources to our city? They're putting a marijuana store outside of the city, but we're saying that we don't want a marijuana store inside of the city, but we still are going to have resources that are going to be committed to those, to that area. So we just had a question about that. And then the SBDC, I actually worked with the SBDC at Highline when I went to Highline, and it was very, it helped me out a lot as far as like me starting my business, writing a business plan, so it is a very, very valuable resource. But there, me as a small business owner and entrepreneur, there are a lot of open spaces right now, and we have a lot of big, grandiose ideas for bringing businesses outside of the community here. What is federal way's plan for bringing, for helping local businesses and entrepreneurs that are right here in the area? And we have ideas as far as that as well. As far as like the CDBG, nonprofits, and different things of that nature, how do we find out like where we're giving the money if they're actually doing and targeting actually what we're giving them the money for? Is there a stat, some type of stat that says, okay, we did this as far as our goal was to take so many people off the street? So whatever the goal is, is there a way that we can track that and actually make sure that we're getting what we need out of it? Violence prevention recommendations, you have 10 recommendations to have been implemented, and then just looking at them, it doesn't, I mean, the success of them, it almost looks like none of them have been implemented. So we wanted to bring that up. Let me see. 55% of the population is 34 or younger, you know, reaching out to the younger community. There's a lot of great things that are going on, but I haven't seen anything really that was the Kilworth. That looks like a great situation, but we would, I mean, we want to look and see how we can all be all-inclusive. And then after that, instead of like a public comment, what about public conversation? Because just me talking to you and then you guys not having to talk back, and then there's like 25 meetings besides this one, or 24 besides this one, and we all can't make all of them. So is there a way that we can talk to you guys and actually have a dialogue with you guys instead of be trying to crap everything, I'm sorry, into five or three minutes or whatever it is? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Lynn Idahosa, speaking on behalf of five present individuals that are listed, for five minutes, please. And then Marquise Hale, and then Ronaldo Terrell Mixon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As you know, I'm a precinct committee officer here in federal way. My primary focus is not just voter registration, but voter education, which drove me to realize that the most effective tool I have to teach voter education is to utilize the system. I attend these meetings out of the voice for community members that don't understand how the city works and are unable to articulate effectively and communicate for themselves what concerns they have, showing them that participating in these local processes makes a difference and is teaching them of the democracy we value is important. None of the opinions I share here tonight or any other night I stand before you are representative of the 30th district, of which I'm a member as well as an E-Board member and a KCDCC delegate for the 30th district. I speak to you with my personal opinions on behalf of the citizens that pour their hearts out to me in frustration and have a lack of understanding about what they need to do to see a change in our community here in federal way. The first issue I want to bring up today is regarding a meeting I attended yesterday. I attended the Human Services Commission, and I just had a few comments to share tonight in reference to the CDBG funds. I found that while the city is discussing the budget and the fact that we need to increase funding to here, city staff advisors to the commission refer to $100,000 as a small sum, like it's no money. That isn't really worth the commission's time or the administrative staff's time to do a formal application process. And to a lot of organizations that submit funding requests, as, that is a lot of money. In times like these, when our budget is already stretched, I urge you to think about city funds as if they were your own. We cannot only make, we cannot only effective, make effective but responsible choices here, and we need to change how we think about these choices and humanize the process. Every penny counts, just like it does in my household budget. The funding decisions you make now will have an impact on the resources we have available in the future. I should hope that we begin to fund programs that pertain to our youth at a higher rate and not just youth as in teenagers, preventing possible criminalization. Our elementary and middle school kids need after-school programs as well. Schools don't have the only responsibility to be the learning source for our children. We have to expand the children of federal way's horizons. I understand there are guidelines on how the money can be spent, but in the past two weeks, I've attended various committee and commission meetings, and the main factor I find in all is the vastness of incorrect information you have to work with. How can you make a decision on these funds from an NRSA report that is five years old? Or admittedly inaccurate counts on the homeless community. In the last four years alone, the growth in this community has been tremendous, yet the staff advising the commission says that that data is now relevant and new data is irrelevant, similar to the staff response in Parks and Recreation Health and Human Services Public Safety Committee regarding the inaccuracy of the numbers reported by one night out. This is an issue for me. Are we just showing up to work? Are we showing up to be effective? And that's not just to your committees, but the people that provide you that information. We cannot adequately address these issues if we don't first have a commitment to the integrity of the information we use to make that decision. I noticed that the same applicants for funding from the city Human Services Committee also have numbers on our homeless committee. We have an opportunity to use those applications to also fact-check. When we're authorizing more money, there's no current process to address if the program is effective. How much, how many are they serving? What type of homeless citizens are they encountering? Did they come here from Seattle out of state? Are they on the street? Are they couch-serving? With, who are you serving? How many are you churning away? What needs are not being met? I'm also concerned with the homelessness task force agenda. With the mayor's current timeline, the report isn't even complete enough time for the council to find a way to add recommendations to the budget for the next two years. And on top of that, they are not even tasked to find and suggest reasonable solutions. Why are we paying for a report with such minimal facts? They can't tell us how many people are really out in our community that are homeless. They have no way of telling us how to be successful in combating the problem, instead of just following the footsteps of Seattle and other cities. I passed out some sample ideas I have regarding the homelessness issues, such as declaring a state of emergency, which the city of Seattle did in 2015, as well as considering alternative options that are more cost-effective, and instead of continuing to move encampments, let's create some shelter opportunities here. Another point that was covered in the meeting that disturbed me was regarding PAC. On top of the CDGB funds, there's also an additional $200,000 that's going from the Human Services Budget to PAC, and I just really can't understand how you guys can justify that. But you guys have an opportunity, if you were to file a state of emergency, to reallocate those funds to a way that we can adequately stand and believe in as a community. Most of the people here did not want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on that facility that is not making us any money. I have more, but thank you so much.
All right. Marquise Hale.
Hello, city council. My name is Marquise Hale. I've been living in federal way for 18 years, and I've never been able, I'm going to bring something that Lamont brought up earlier, I've never been able to sit down with a city official and actually talk to them personally. I find that that's a problem because you guys are the ones that make the rules in our city. And if we cannot sit down, yes, we have a lot of people in federal way, we have a lot of people, I understand that, but if I'm reaching out to you personally, you should be able to contact me back and say yea or nay. The only person I've been able to, in good contact with is Jesse Johnson. That's it. That's a shame. I should be able to speak to any one of you guys, just because, you know, this is what we need. We need to talk to you guys. Because see, me, I'm looking at one side. I don't see both sides. See, if you, the problem is you guys say yes, and you don't give an answer of why you're saying yes. And then you say no, and you don't give an answer of why you're saying no. And so that's why we're confused. Another thing is, I heard a lot of stories up here, and I mean, you know, it's important. I think it's important, but the most important is our safety. As, you know, I'm a Decatur High School graduate, but I still have family that's going to school and going into high school, not only Decatur, but federal way, Beamer, all of that. I need to make sure that my family is protected, not my, just not my family, but kids in general. And so my question is, what can you guys present to us to make sure that we are protected? You guys talked about the, you know, the traffic lights and all of that. That's all cool, but the human safety, we need to make sure that we're safe. We can go out of, go out of our house, and we, a lot of us are driven by our mothers or fathers or on the bus or whatever, and we walk, you know, that's, that's all good and dandy. The problem is our accountability, like we're not promised that we're going to go home. Okay. That's all I have.
Oh, no, you've got 30 seconds left, Marquise. You've got a little bit more time left.
So, 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 since I have a little more time left, my question, like, you know, can, can you guys actually give us something that at least we can, because I, man, I reach out to you guys a lot. I have Jesse's personal number. I talk to him all the time. But I mean, I will, we got to start being a little more personable. That's important for me. If I was a city councilman or whatever, I would be more personable with my community and letting them know what needs to be done and what will be done. I will let them know if I say yes, I'll give them a reason why, and if I say no, I'll give them a reason why. That's it.
Thanks, Marquise. I would, Marquise, I would, I would note that we, council has offices here, I have an office here, so if you want to meet with any of us, you know, come on by, and Jerry Lynn is the executive assistant for the council, and we've got a couple of folks in my office. Give us a call, or come on by anytime, we'll make time. And I know that if you send us an email, you know, we'll get back to you, and we'll sit down, and you can bring some friends, and we'll have a talk. All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Copang.
Marquise, I wanted to reach out to you in particular and say, I just went through all my emails, and I've not seen anything from you.
Yeah.
I would, really, I mean, email is available, my number.
Um, uh, Councilmember Copeng?
Uh, Marquise, I wanted to reach out to you in particular and say, I just went through all my emails and I've not seen anything from you.
Yeah.
Um, I would, really, I mean, email is available. My number is two-five-three-two-five-zero-eight-zero-two-two. Call me anytime. I make myself available. I know every other m- member of this council makes himself available. Um, I think that it's very important that we, that we understand, um, that we're open doors, we're available, we get out in the community, we want to meet with everybody. If you don't reach out to us, though, we don't necessarily know you.
Yeah, I want, I want to back that up because...
Just extend that one thing. Come our way, let us know you need something, and we'll work with you, okay?
I, I want to back that up because every email I get, I respond to people. And people ask to meet with me, I give them times and dates, several options to take. I don't think any of us don't do things like that, so I'm sorry you have that, that feeling that it doesn't happen, but I'm, I'm meeting with people all the time. Sometimes we meet in the community, sometimes we meet here at the building. But we don't not answer you, we do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just also comment, and I think it's interesting, Marquise...
Marquise, hold on just for a second.
Thank you.
Marquise, I think you got our attention.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And that, that's a good segue because clearly you're saying, Marquise...
No, 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 Marquise, we're, no. We're not, we're not, no, let's not do that. Uh, Martin, go ahead.
So, Marquise, y- you're sitting back in your chair, you're noticing a lot of people commenting here, and that's, um, we, we take our job very seriously, all of us, in being responsive, and I know that you have a previous relationship with Jesse and that's awesome and that's great, but you've got to, we don't know who to get ahold of unless you get ahold of us, and that's, begins the dialogue. Uh, I know that I've done two community events that are out in the community, I've done paid advertisements so that the word can be out there, and that's open to anybody. You know, so there are, there are plenty of opportunities for you to engage with us, there is pl- uh, plenty of opportunity for you to, uh, see us in the community, uh, and I know I've seen you at Neighborhood Connection meetings, uh, and so I appreciate your involvement in the community, but y- you gotta take the step in reaching out so that we can develop that relationship so that we can get to the point where you can call me and say, hey, I don't like this, uh, or, or whatnot. And the last comment I will say is, I think we all do a fairly good job of articulating why we vote the way we're voting. Uh, and, and all, I've been up here for five years and I'm blessed for that opportunity, and I've listened to all my colleagues, and they're quite passionate about why they're, they're supportive of something or not supportive of something. Uh, and so, um, but, but I appreciate you coming up here and making that case, um, so...
All right. Okay, Ronaldo Terrell Mixon, and then Dawn Meader McCosland, and then Ventura Usema, Betty Taylor, and Nathaniel Cook. So, Ronaldo first. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right.
Hello, my name is Ronaldo Terrell Mixon. Um, I'm a very active youth in the community. Um, I'm an entrepreneur, a barber, I make t-shirts. Uh, I'm actually a, a employer, employee for the Federal Way Public School District as well. I intern at the Open Doors Acceleration Academy, part of Truman's campus. Um, I came today to represent, uh, the game of life, just to say that, to tell you guys what the, 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 geez, what, the, what game of life has done for me. Um, it has, uh, blessed me with a lot of opportunities, so forth, this being active in the community and actually giving my, myself, um, a voice to, to, to speak to the other youth in the community, since I do have a platform to speak on. Um, and it has allowed me to do multiple things like make t-shirts for different programs, um, it's blessed me with different job opportunities, and, and it's not just about basketball. Um, I'm from Los Angeles, California, where there's a high percentage of incarceration of the youth, and the only reason that is because we don't have anything to do, no one's given us anything productive to do, so thenfore we turn, and turn into a product of our environment. So, if you guys want to get down and actually to the bottom of everything, you will actually bring more programs around like the game of life, uh, hype, pop, and the Federal Way Youth Action Team is, is, as well. Um, and if not, then you'll definitely be put in all your police cars and, you know, your new police members to work. And I actually brought, um, some t-shirts for you guys too, just to show, uh, a token of my appreciation, as well as what game of life has shared with me, so I'm just being a person and...
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Actually, why don't we do it on, on this side? Thank you very much, that's very thoughtful.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate it. All right. Good job. T-shirts are fun. All right, thanks. Okay, uh, so now we've got Dawn Meade McCosland.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to speak in support of the Camp Kilworth Preservation. Um, I'm really pleased to hear about, um, the council's support and leadership in this and, um, all of the community's support that's been here. It's, I'm relatively new to this community and, um, I was really struck by this property when I first came. I think it's truly a treasure. Um, as a planning commissioner, I am well aware of the amount of development happening in this community, and I think if we lose this, we, we will really regret it. It's really remarkable, and, um, and then I know you are also looking at self-storage uh, this evening, and I wrestled with that, uh, issue a lot, and I'm really, um, happy to hear that you're going to be revisiting some of the recommendations and looking at some other options. I'll be interested to see what you come up with, um, on that. I think there's some merits to the design guidelines. I'd like to encourage us to take a holistic approach going forward and, um, look at those, overall our commercial design standards, um, as, as sort of a takeaway from this process. And finally, I want to say, in my professional work, I do consulting on entrepreneurship programs, and I am aware of Start Zone and, um, and, uh, the SBDC. I've, um, interviewed them for feasibility studies on similar programs, and, uh, they, they really do great work. It's a really important asset in our community to have these opportunities. They provide, um, a, an amazing entry points for folks that are ambitious and face barriers, and so I want to also speak in support of them. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Ventura Usema?
Hello, um, Mayor, people. Uh, this is my, uh, this is my second time doing this, so like, I did this in Portland, but, uh, I had a one-on-one with the Seattle Mayor when I was younger, undoing institu- institutional racism, and, um, what I want to talk to you guys about today is the same thing that my brother was talking about, is be more human with us and accept human contact as much as you can, because you are going to learn through this process even more. Like, not everybody can schedule an appointment, not everybody can go through an office, you know what I'm saying? So, the pipe, the pipeline, uh, to prison, like, to prison from high school is very big. In Federal Way, uh, the community of Federal Way, I find it that, um, we are more trained in our minds to be athletes before, you know, students. It's pretty much basically football or basketball or the streets. That's basically what it is. And what I want to do is motivate you guys to, uh, look at youth builders in Seattle, Portland youth builders also, to make it an idea to put the trades back in high school. Because that career path and learning those, those skills inside school can set our youth onto better futures, better lives, and not having, having to be like, you know, I didn't graduate high school, I wasn't the star athlete, but where do I go now? You know what I'm saying? What do I do when I am too late? It, it is your guy, is your guy's job and opportunity, opportunity, obligation, I feel like, to show them that you are not too late. It's not too late, it's never too late, not until you're dead. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, Betty Taylor, and then Nathaniel Cook. Betty?
Good evening, um, councilmembers and citizens. I'm not trying to re- recreate the will or anything like that, but I just want to kind of like, um, talk about Night Out again. But what I want to do, I want to say about, um, um, I know Night Out was happening on August seventh, uh, six to nine in some neighborhoods, but for, um, uh, residents that are basically live up and around the New Town Square Park, trying to, um, target those residents that are in apartment complexes around that area. A lot of, um, apartment complexes do not have Night Out. So, uh, this is having the Night Out event at the New Town Square Park will enable those that do not have Night Out in their, um, neighborhood to come and join with other, um, citizens. Um, we will start from four, uh, we were starting at four and we'll go to nine o'clock, and that's, is at the New Town Square Park, um, um, in Federal Way. So, um, not taking away from, uh, anything that anybody else is doing in the city. Um, we will be having food and, and entertainment and socialization also, a lot of, um, activities for kids too. So, I want to, with that, and then I wanted to, um, I talked about that, but then I wanted to ask, I want to say something about the city council members. Um, I've been in this city for over fifteen years, and whenever there is a problem that I have, I know that I can always go to them. I, there's, I, there's an open door, there's an open door. I mean, we may not agree all the time, but there's an open door, and I appreciate that open door. Uh, many times I've seen, um, several council members, you even have like coffee hours, will you invite the public to come and talk? You guys, they do that, they're open. I mean, their emails are open, I mean, they respond. So, um, it's not about us against them, it's not about attacking the council, but it's about working together. This is a city, this is Federal Way. They are not against the citizens, but they work together with the citizens. And if you don't understand anything they do or say, just, just ask. One thing that I do want to say is that on different flyers, I know that, um, I know that sometimes the, um, city can sponsor events and the, the, maybe they can have the, the, uh, city, uh, city of Federal, Federal Way on the flyer, and so my, I would like an understanding about what constitutes a city-sponsored event, and what makes you have, uh, how can you get the city logo on your flyer? How can that be? So I would really like that explained to me, because I'm, I'm totally confused. Yeah.
Okay.
If somebody can help me out with that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yarden, can you, uh, can you talk to Betty real quick? Uh, the city did sponsor, at the last time, at the last council meeting, uh, there was a question on whether we were going to sponsor, uh, the use of Town Square Park. I did make the decision to do that, uh, but we've got over twenty-seven locations all throughout the city of, of National Night Out, of which we've done this well over twenty years now. So, each location, um, uh, so that, that's, uh, it's part of a network of now, now probably twenty-eight locations or twenty-seven locations. So, uh, Yarden will explain that. Thank you, Betty. Okay, um, Nathaniel Cook? Nathaniel Cook? And then, um, Turza Idahoza?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, uh, council, citizens of Federal Way. My apologies for my delay, I was kind of considering not talking, um, so that's why I was kind of like, waiting, um. I've got some notes here.
Nathaniel, can you hold on just for a second?
Yeah, for sure.
Can you hold the clock for a second? You guys, I'm hearing some background chatter, can we, if you guys need to talk, either can you do it a little bit softer or go outside? Uh, we want to make sure that we hear Mr. Cook. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't know, there's a, a lot on my mind, but, um, I guess tonight I'll speak, uh, on behalf of, um, the homeless. I guess, um, there's like a lot going on with the, like, homeless research and data and numbers and all that. I'm a father of two, and I'm a divorcee, uh, and I'm also, um, combat vet, three times, uh, three tours, uh, twice to Afghanistan and once to Iraq. Um, I'm also a homeless vet, I'm also sleeping in my car. Uh, I used to stay at Bella Sonoma in Fife, I had a, a nice town home, and, uh, went through divorce, uh, with my ex and fell in some hard times. I had to pay her a lot of money in a really short amount of time. And, uh, so, but at the same time, I just wanted to say like I'm not, um, asking for a handout, and I think there's a lot of vets that are silent, we don't really say too much be- behind like emotion and embarrassment, um, uh, but we're not, like, I'm not hand-handling, I'm not asking for, uh, anything, actually. Um, I'm kind of disappointed in, uh, American politics, to be honest. Um, but instead of complaining about that, I'm getting ready to graduate from Seattle Pacific University next year, and so I plan to make a difference by actually like embedding myself in it and try to do something from the inside out. Um, it's, uh, it's frustrating. Um, I hear you mentioned, um, certain agencies like King County Housing Authority, I'm highly disappointed, um, in that agency, I'm highly disappointed in some of my veteran agencies, um, to include the VA Hospital that's, uh, in Columbia Way. Um, I was diagnosed with major depressive disorder, I was diagnosed with, um, separation anxiety from combat, and, um, I filed for compensation, I was denied three times. Uh, it took, um, it's taken like a congressional call from my mom, uh, like a congressional inquiry to, I guess, get any headway or any type of productive ball-rolling. Um, for the past three years, I've been patronized, uh, lied to, um, all politically correct, of course, it's been super nice, but, um, a dense lack of transparency and truth. And, um, and that's a problem, and I think that's what our inner city is frustrated with, I think that's what a lot of our general population, and even to include the suburbs, are frustrated with, um, that we promote liberty, justice, freedom, um, truth, and yet there seems to be a lack of it historically in our nation, um, not just our local community, and so, um, I want to end on a positive note, let's keep, you know, hope and faith alive, let's, uh, continue to be positive, but, um, there's a lot of work to do. That's all.
Thanks for coming, Nathaniel, thank you. Turza Idahoza?
I first want to say hello and thank you again for having these forums so we can come out and have something to say, um, but I'm, I was ready to say all kinds of stuff here, but I'm just bothered by this brother and nobody here offered him anything. He said he's homeless and sleeping in his car. You guys don't have any programs or anything to say to this young man, just let him walk off like that? I'm just kind of in shock, just honestly. But I do have some programs and stuff I would personally tell you about and get you connected because I'm a military brat, so I understand that that's, our people have really suffered, you know, military, we just kind of leave them out there. But, um, you all know that I'm also running for senator here, and I kept telling some people that I met today and had conversations with them about the housing issue, that I would speak about that tonight. I was in some of the committee meetings this last week, and it seemed like the committee people were shocked to find out that somebody they knew, um, their rent had been raised to over seven-hundred-and-fifty thou- seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars when it came up for, you know, his renewing his lease. Um, and they were shocked, but this is something that the people in this community go through every day, anywhere from twenty dollars to seven-hundred-and-fifty or a thousand dollars is a rent increase, which is outrageous, and we have to do something about that. We can't keep allowing people to go through that. Um, if we're all, all these programs about homelessness, I think we should prevent people from being homeless, and there's a way to do it. Stop allowing these, um, owners, homeowners, landlords to charge outrageous amounts of rent increases, um, and they're doing it every year. Um, somebody can't even barely get settled in their house in one year. They have to get first, last, security deposit just to get into the property, and then within the next year, they're having to pay anywhere from twenty dollars to seven-hundred-and-fifty, sometimes a thousand dollars. It's outrageous, and we have to do something, and that's why they come to the city council. And I told them that I would be their voice, and so I was explaining that to you tonight, that that's a real concern, and I hope that you put that on your radar, um, to do something about it. The other thing that I wanted to talk about as also was the, um, the brother speaking, he just graduated high school, and, um, for the council to say that they have to continue to come to you guys, they made an, and they had a youth forum two weeks before they graduated. All the high schools were there, it was a public invitation for everybody to be there, to come and hear what the young people had to say. They said things like they were graduating and weren't unable to read or to write, and they're graduating and have... they're graduating and have nothing to offer since they're out of school. I agree to putting the trades back into the school because when, when they have the trades in the school, apprenticeship programs, job sharing, trades, those kinds of things, those kids can graduate with making over $50,000 a year. That is way more than $15 an hour for anybody. So we should be more active in putting those things in so when our kids graduate, they actually have a career versus, and be self-sufficient versus having nothing. Half of them are not even employed or in college. So we have to do better than that in supporting our young people. And don't just ask them to come to us, we should be going to them. You guys know where they are. They're in the high schools. Thank you.
Is, is Mr. Cook still in the room?
He left.
He left? All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Does, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? I'm out of pink sheets. All right. Thank you, thank you very much for a great public comment period. Okay. Item five, the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and can be passed all at once, but I will ask to see if a council member would want a, any of the items pulled for separate consideration. Five A, the minutes for the July 3, 2018 regular and special meeting. Five B, authorization to apply for a Department of Ecology water quality grant, water quality assessment. Item C, 2019 and 20, surface water maintenance and services contract, authorization to bid. Item D, authorization to apply for Transportation Improvement Board grants. Council, are there any particular items that you would want pulled for separate consideration? Counsel? Hearing none. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move approval of items A through D on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion to, to move forward, items A, B, C, and D. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Those matters pass. Council business. Council discussion, pavement management system program overview, staff report from Desiree Winkler, Deputy Public Works Director. And there will not be action after this, after this item. Desiree?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I am happy to present kind of the state of our streets. So why is this so important? Our pavement infrastructure is the city's largest asset. It consists of over 238 centerline miles or 545 lane miles. If we were having to replace all this infrastructure at once, it would be over $260 million. So what we do, we want to manage our streets the best that we can. We rate them visually, every bit of them, every two years. And currently, our overall pavement condition index, or PCI, which I'll refer to throughout this presentation, is a 77 and that's out of 100. So a big part of our program in managing our pavement infrastructure is we have an annual street overlay program and we select streets to overlay based on several factors, including its current PCI ratings. We prioritize the streets based on their classification, so we want to make sure we're taking care of arterials, which have the most volume, our collectors next, and then residential's become a third priority as resources allow. That also coincides with the traffic volume. We have to compare it with available program budget. We recommend a list and then we bring it to city council for approval. Currently, so that 77 of our overall pavement rating is, you know, divided up between our different classifications. So our principal arterials are at a 77 with the minor arterials at 74 and then go all the way through. The most lane miles we have is actually in our residential system and its current average PCI is a 78 and we weight an average of all those roads, so that gets us to the 77 overall PCI rating in the city as of 2017. So what does this look like? So a PCI of 100 means a brand-new, perfect road. It still looks brand-new and perfect as you go through the 90s. So here's a couple of brand-new pavements with PCI of a 94 and a 98. As it starts to degrade, we get to a good pavement, which hovers around a PCI of 75 and if you look closely, you start to see kind of some minor cracking in the wheel paths. And as it continues to degrade, we get to a fair pavement condition, which would be a PCI around a 60, 61, and you're starting to see more cracks in the wheel path as it degrades. And then we get to a PCI 52 and some more things happening. You start to see some more potholes, you're going to see some breaking out of the pavement. This is an example on military road. And then we get to basically complete failure, which we call this alligator cracking because it looks like the skin of an alligator. And it's really not much we can do there or let it revert back to its natural rock state of gravel. Or we pretty much just have to kind of grind up this, this portion of the pavement and provide a whole new surface. So our annual budget for our overlay program right now is about $1.5 million. It used to be more like $2 million a year. When we got to budget issues and recession and cuts happen in 2011, the payment annual maintenance budget was reduced, or overlay budget, by about half a million dollars. So what does that do to the pavement condition index? Well, if we look at the, well, before we get to that, the punchline, also what's happening is between 2007, 2017, is that we have inflation. So the dollars per ton of asphalt, which is how we measure the pavement that goes down from 2007 to 2017, went from $62 a ton to $75 a ton. And as a result, we're able to get less done with the same amount of money and less money. And as a result, our PCI has gone down. We used to have a pavement condition index of 86 and as of the 2017 ratings, biannual ratings, it's gone down to a 77. The other thing that impacts our ability to pave roads is that we are required, as part of paving roads, to upgrade the curb ramps that are for crossing the streets to meet current American With Disability Act, or ADA, standards. And those are expensive. They're not cheap. It's actually, gets really expensive when we do residential roads because there's a lot more crossings to upgrade. Also, those tend to be our older neighborhoods and there's less that are likely to meet standards, at least on our arterial roads. We've done some relatively recent work and we're able to maybe keep some of those and not replace as many. But it varies per year that even though we get a $1.5 million of budget now to put onto pavement, there's some years we're spending close to half a million dollars in concrete. So just to, just to kind of let you know what, what we're fighting against, that it's a requirement, we have to do it no matter what the color of the money, we have to do these ADA upgrades. Just a comparison of what our, some of our neighboring jurisdictions are spending, maybe not so fair, but Auburn and Kent in the last few years recently passed some street, you know, bonding in order to try to get at their very large backlog of failed streets. So what we did, kind of make everything equal, is to look at how much are they spending per centerline mile? And unfortunately, we're one of the lowest. And that was, and it's kind of what's happened. I mean, our payment rating in the last 10 years dropped nine points. Okay, so the next few slides kind of tell the same story, but in a little different way. On the, on the left side, you'll see the average pavement condition index. On the bottom is the amount of money in tens of millions or millions of dollars per year. If we want to be able to maintain our current rating, average rating of a 77, it will require an annual budget of around $2.5 million per year. Currently, we have a budget of $1.5 million per year. In 10 years, our pavement condition index will drop to a 67 from its current 77. And I want, stop with that. That's not a joke. I mean, that's what's happened in the last 10 years. We haven't spent what we need to spend, so this is kind of where we're at and some challenges we have. Again, in a different way, you can look at different levels of funding. You look at the green number again, is the $2.5 million annually. You can see that that maintains a steady state of the pavement condition index. If you want to bump up the condition, a $3 million annually in 10 years would get us up to an 85. And again, the $1.5 million annually, which is the purple line, drops our payment rating in 10 years down to about a 67. This shows the blue line of our, the blue bars on this graph is our current budget. The teal bars show basically what the deferred maintenance is. So if in one year, you only spent 1.5 million, you get to the next year, in order to get back up to the 77, you got to pay the 1.5 plus more in order to catch up with the deferred As far as what we're trying to do is we are trying to preserve the pavement at its optimum life cycle. So the better the condition of the pavement, the cheaper it is to maintain it, just like your car. If you give it oil changes regularly, it's cheaper to do those oil changes, but you can keep the maintenance of your car. If you just don't want to change the oil and in a couple of years, you can just buy a new engine. So that's just kind of, kind of the thoughts. So the optimum rating for a pavement rehabilitation where you get, you know, 75% out of the life of it is basically dropping about 40% of the quality, which is a PCI rating around a 55 or 65 is kind of the sweet spot of when we want to try to maintain it. So rehabilitation versus the current, the PCI of the pavement, you can see, as I was saying before, that the better the PCI, the cheaper it is to maintain it. So if it was a 90 and you just want to put a seal coat on it or something, it's only $3 a square yard, but it rejuvenates the pavement enough to get some more life out of it. When we get down to a 60, which is where we're at, when we're getting these pavements, somewhere between a 50 and 60 now, we're spending more like $30 per square yard to maintain it and you really don't want it to drop to below or failure because then you're over doubling the cost at $67 per square yard. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the ADA ramps.
Yes.
So I was injured in 1990 and could barely walk. I got a wheelchair in 1995, 1996. We moved into a neighborhood that was about 20 years old at the time and in using my wheelchair in the neighborhood, it was very difficult because the ADA ramps to get off the sidewalk were so far apart from each other and my neighborhood owns half the streets the HOA owns, so. But I would say whenever those can be replaced, there are people in wheelchairs that really depend on those and that the more we can help people get around and be able to take care of themselves and to get out and if they need a wheelchair and they need those ADA ramps to be fixed, I really support that.
Oh, absolutely. And I agree. And in a future presentation, we will need to adopt what's called an ADA transition plan. It'll be the first, first, first step of our ADA transition plan because we're focusing in public works right now on our right-of-way. You know, we also need to make sure we focus on our public facilities with that as well. But I will come to you and we'll kind of talk about the, the state of our system, at least the first part of the system that we've analyzed pretty closely, which is our city center.
All right. Councilor DeClo?
Oh, I just want to say, I've always bragged to people about the quality of our streets here in Federal Way. I used to bicycle all over South King County and there were some places I could hardly bike on the street because there were so many potholes and I always found ours to be in pretty good shape. And this is, this is, this is sad to hear because I always bragged about the quality of our streets and I'm sorry to hear that we're having fallen behind on that.
I am too. But yeah, that's some...
Well, I thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it's still, we're still above. I mean, like I said, the Kents and the Auburns that really got into desperate disrepair, really, I think finally their voters were just like, yep, you know, we need to approve something and Tacoma also passed some significant packages for that, so.
Right. Okay. Councilor Copeng?
Yeah, Desiree, thanks again for this presentation. I know we worked on it L U T C and fine-tuned it and here we are. Thank you. But I think it's so important for, I think, the community to understand as a whole the, the investment required to maintain our roads. I know that Public Works does a great job of utilizing the resources available, whether it's road funding, grants. There's a lot of things that go into creating the road network that we have and having it maintained and I want to thank you for that work. But again, I think for the council as a whole, we can have these presentations in our committees, but not all of you get to be there. So we really wanted to make sure that you as well understood the, the real importance that we have in continuing to invest in our roads or we're going to see them diminish to the point where they become very expensive for us to fix. So anyway, thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Desiree. That's for information only. Obviously, we're going to, there'll be greater conversations when we get into the budget. All right. Item B, Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team, V N E T, VNET, U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, H I D T A Task Force Agreements. First of all, a staff report from Chief Wong. Chief?
Good evening again. The police department is seeking council approval this evening to enter into an agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration's DEA Regional Task Force, also known as Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team, VNET, to continue our efforts to impact drug trafficking in our community and in the region. We currently have a detective assigned to the DEA Task Force and we have been participating on this task force since 2010. The agreement is renewed annually, which allows for our participation and also to be reimbursed for our overtime expenditure for our detective, up to $18,343.75 annually and equitable sharing with the federal government. This is a multi-jurisdictional team to effectively investigate enforced laws related to controlled substance. The police department recommends that we continue our partnership with our federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies to address the ongoing drug problem in a positive, proactive manner. This item is being brought to you tonight in council business because it's, it is time-sensitive to get this contract signed this month. I'm certainly available to answer any questions you might have.
Council, Councilmember Sephardoson?
Thank you. Can part of this money be used by any chance for educating the public?
No. The money that come, $18,343.75 is strictly for reimbursing our detective for overtime expenditure.
Right.
However, with our equitable sharing funds, that if there's a seizure of assets, that the municipalities get 80% of that and the federal government keeps, DEA keeps 20% of that. So that 80% of the money can be used, but it is intended for combating drugs or what have you. It can't be just used for general fund or for that nature. It's got to be to reinvest back into combating drug issues. So, so if there is something that combats drugs and you, we wanted to use the asset forfeiture funds, we can do that. The federal money's more liberal, meaning anything that has to do with law enforcement can be used. State seizure funds are very restrictive on what you can purchase with that money.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. Thanks for presenting this, Chief. So when a seizure is done, could that include housing? Could that include a house?
Absolutely.
And then what hap, does, then what happens? So let's say we acquire a house because of... So let's say we acquire a house because of drug activity. What happens after we acquire that house?
Sure. So just, I'll back up a little bit. Whether we go after a particular asset or not has a lot of different variables. If the house is underwater or upside down, certainly, we're not going to do that. If it's, if it's financed and there's very little equity, you know, we're not going to pursue, pursue those homes. But assuming everything does line up and we can show that it's organized crime and so forth, if we take that asset, then obviously, when it becomes our property after the court proceedings and so forth, then we'll use a realtor and the home is sold, and then those proceeds, the profit, will come into the DEA. And at that time, at some point, there'll be a distribution of those funds to the municipal agencies under the equitable sharing agreement, the contract.
Thank you for that answer. And so the activity that happened maybe a month ago where six houses were raided in Federway, were those houses seized?
I, I don't know the exact number, but three of the four homes, we are currently working with the city attorney's office and prosecutor's office with our detectives. We're looking at the feasibility of doing asset forfeiture on those homes. Yes. Because we believe that some of that is organized crime.
If you choose to not take a home, then what happens to, does it go back to its, the person you arrested for?
If we can't show a criminal nexus to an organized group or the homeowner in some way, we don't feel that we can actually do a seizure, then it just stays with the property owner of that.
Can you, Chief, can you explain the difference between a tender, somebody who is just, you know, in the house but doesn't own it and is tending the crop, versus the, the actual legal owner of the property improving knowledge of this?
So tenders are people who are.
I think I just did, but sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People who are growing marijuana. We got to show a nexus of those people who are growing marijuana to the homeowner or some other group, some sort of organized crime. If, if, if I'm a landlord of a piece of property and I'm really a good citizen, I rent a home out, next thing I know, police are contacting me because my tenants are growing marijuana. And I'm like, are you kidding me? And I addressed that issue. I, I don't think we're, in that type of scenario, if those are the facts, we want to, we want to try to seize that property owner's home, because it gives them an opportunity to correct the problem.
Mayor, can I clarify something too?
Yeah.
Just, there is a major difference between seizing chattels or like a car, something you can grab, you just take it, and yet now you've seized it, and it's up to them to try to get it back. Real property, it's a court action. We have to go get title to the property, so it's a court proceeding. So it's a, it's a much higher bar, it's much more scrutiny, and so we look at this, and it's expensive. So we want to be sure that we can successfully prove that nexus before we spend the money to go to court.
All right. Great. Okay. Counsel, any other questions on this?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moore.
Yeah, thank you so much. Chief, I appreciate the last line in your presentation. I think that provided some clarification on my part because for, for the council to know, there was action that was taken during that committee, and it was a table that issued. But because it's a time-sensitive issue, it's the reason why you see it on the agenda. So I appreciate that clarity that you just provided. When you say time-sensitive, what, what does that mean? Are you talking about like, it needs to be done this month, or?
Yes. The DEA, for their fiscal year, they need these contracts back so they can start paying our detectives the overtime.
Okay.
So we need to get it done like July because they need it by August 15. And sometimes with these things, we've actually brought it to committee and said, you know, like Washington Traffic Safety Commission, we've kind of accepted the money, but if you said no, we'll give it back. But we, so, but instead of doing that in this case, we just thought it would be best to just bring it tonight and, and get your approval, you know, tonight. And then that way, we don't have to wait till next month to present in committee, council, and then we're, we're not going to make it in time.
And that would be a delayed payment of overtime?
We just won't have an agreement, and yes.
We won't have an agreement.
We won't have an agreement with them, signed. There's equitable sharing opportunities and overtime money that, you know, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't distribute it until they have a contract in place.
Yep. No, I appreciate the clarification there and, and yeah, thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Okay. Councilwoman Johnson, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the Drug Enforcement Administration MOU and HIDTA agreement between the City of Federway, Federway Police Department, and the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration, and authorize the chief of police to execute said agreements.
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to first reading of ordinances. Council Bill 742, amending Title 19 Federway Revised Code related to self-service storage facilities and design guidelines. First, we'll have a staff report from Doc Hanson, Planning Manager. After that, I'll have the, the city clerk to read the title, and we'll go from there. Doc?
Thank you, Mary, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I want to bring something up that was summarized last year. We've taken, it's been about nine months since we've done this. If you all remember, it was last October that I presented to you this, this graph. This graph represents the number of self-storage units that we had received in terms of application in one year. The applications that were discussed, they weren't actually applications, there were discussions about having self-storage units within the area. We were evaluating these in terms of the number of units per household. That really was an accurate statement. What you asked us to do was to go out and research this and to find out why so much of this was happening within the City of Federway. You didn't, you didn't give me any direction in terms of what to do. We didn't know what we were to do. You asked for a research. What we were able to find in talking to developers of self-storage was that a lot of self-storage units, well, all self-storage units that are marketed today are based on square footage by per capita. That means if we have a certain amount of square footage of self-storage units per capita, it, a self-storage unit will be or will not be built in a particular area. The City of Federway, we were informed, has a per capita rating of about six square feet per capita. Normally, the market isn't saturated until we get to 12 square feet per capita. So we had a number of units that were coming into place. Existing, we have 4,731 units. That's been an approximate number, but that's basically what we could count. Land use was approved and building permit was approved for 657 units. And right now, we have a land use approval and building permits that are under review of 4,100 units. That means we're going to have, no matter what action is taken by the council, we're going to have double the number of storage units in the next year that we have right I'm just going to show you very quickly the areas that these occur. This is the area, the only area of CE zoning. They occur there. These are the areas of BC, which are shown primarily along Pacific Avenue. And these are the BN zones. One of the proposals we have is to eliminate self-storage units for BN zones, and I'll go into that in greater detail. We have minimum lot storage areas in the BN zone itself. It requires a minimum zone of, or of, it has a minimum or a maximum building area of 40,000 square feet. Within the BN zone right now, we have a proposal, not a proposal, excuse me, a building that's going in, it's going to equal 120,000 square feet in four different buildings because this was not minimized in our code. We're going to go through a number of design standards that we were looking at based upon what we were seeing within the community. A lot of these buildings that we were seeing were long stretches. We found one that was 375 feet. That was one story worth all the doors being shown, along with a cyclone fence. And these were, these were activities that had been established a decade ago, to, to three decades ago. And there are more of these self-storage units that are coming into the City of Federway and also to other cities that are going to look more like these types of buildings that you see here. You'll see here that there's an emulation of glass or shining material. You'll also see a flat or indulating roof structure. You'll see awnings. You'll see interior sections, a lot of self-storage units that are interior. There are a lot of self-storage units that are actually being developed with this type of architectural feature. We are also looking at having as much as 40% glass. After talking with the LUTC committee last two weeks, two weeks ago, there was a concern or question as to whether there was other types of materials that could emulate glass. And I found that there's a number of materials, including polycarbonate substance, acrylic mirror sheeting, aluminum, a lot of different materials that are less expensive than glass and are used in a lot of buildings, not just self-storage units. I talked about having the roofline variation. Some of them have offset roofs that are flat and then gabled. This isn't necessarily a, a pretty design. It's just giving you an example of the types of design standards that are being proposed to place in this. We're suggesting that there be a maximum of 100, 100 feet rather than having buildings that are 375 feet, so we have a facade and a breakup of the type of activities. You'll see in this building, it is 375 feet. It is not several stories. And it does have, it does have cyclone fencing. We're also suggesting that the storage unit doors be hidden from view. This is a design that could, could be quite acceptable to me if I was to see this, if the doors weren't there. Right now, we see those doors. The, there could be one door with interior storage units without the exterior doors actually being shown. And also, we're, we're recommending that there be different fencing requirements rather than cyclone fence. Excuse me. The, the planning commission made a recommendation to the city council to deny this proposal. And largely, a number of the reasons that they brought this up was that property rights were being infringed upon, that there were not other uses that had these same types of standards. I explained that there are a number of uses that do have these types of uses, including other commercial uses and other activities, and that there were concerns about having multiple stories. So they felt that they were unsafe on second floors. There are lots, if not most, of your new storage buildings that are, that are being built with two to three stories. Bringing it to the LUTC last two weeks ago, has recommended the city council the adoption of the text that was sent to you, with the amendments in consideration of options to emulate the self-storage from, and to eliminate it from neighborhood business. One of the things that was requested by the LUTC, and we did it very quickly, was we evaluated the number of communities that exist and what types of standards they have within them, and compare it with what we're proposing here tonight. Seattle, as a larger community, does allow a neighborhood, the storage units, they're tall. They're limited to 25,000 square feet. In all of King County, your neighborhood businesses, which are few, limited to 10,000 square feet, as does Thurston County. Renton will allow for storage, self-storage units, but they will allow it only as a, a business with other businesses. It has to be a mixed use, and they also hide the doors. Now, what was most interesting was looking at the communities that do not allow them within business zones. Our neighborhood towns, Auburn, Kent, and Sea-Tac, they all do not allow them within business zones. Tacoma does not allow them within business zones, which makes this map that I also showed you 10 months ago very interesting. The 637 units that I was talking about that are being developed is right here. The land use approval of one is right here. They will equal approximately 1,200 units. We were asking ourselves why there was the existence of this one, why there was the proposal of these three, and why these are coming in in this particular area. What I found in research is the, the developers look at a radius of three miles, because what they found is nobody is going to drive more than three miles. I actually did a research by taking a class, a video class, in looking at how they do this. They will study the direction of traffic. So in one particular case, they looked in a three-mile radius, and this one developer found that there were too many storage units in this three-mile radius. They went down a two-mile radius, there were still too many. They went down to a one-mile radius, still too many. They studied, they made the studies of these other activities, and they decided upon a location based upon the traffic and also the location with prime commercial activities. They got it within a six-block area and has been found successful. In other words, if there is a need for self-storage units, it is going to come. It will happen. And the only way to take care of this within our city and how you have them look is by adopting these types of design standards or just not allow them at all. That's why a lot of these have occurred. They are in strict regulation in Kent. They don't allow them in Tacoma. Sea-Tac, they don't allow them, and we're getting them all. So our recommendation is to adopt these design standards. It's only within Chapter 19.115, and it's just the change of that language so that we're providing those types of characteristics. Mayor's recommendation is to adopt these text amendments with the Glass Emulation Amendment, and I will answer any questions at this point.
Before we get there, Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion with regard to the time of the meeting?
Oh, of course. I'd like to propose that we extend the meeting past 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Some motion, a second. Please don't vote against this. Just kidding. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right. We're in business.
Someday we will vote.
Oh, exactly. At some point, it's like, no, no, that's good.
We're done.
Exactly. Okay. Counsel, any questions for Doc? Actually, I see. Go ahead. The deputy mayor, then Councilmember Copeng, and then Councilmember Sephardoson.
Thank you for your report tonight. So when we voted on the moratorium, I remember you came to us to, to say that you were concerned that we were going to have a lot of self-storage units in Federway, and that we needed to take a timeout and study as to why we, why people were coming to Federway to build self-storage. So how did the design concepts that are proposed tonight, how, how does that prevent or reduce the amount of self-storage units that could be built in Federway?
It does not. It does not. The developers will look at the city and the particular areas in terms of need, and as I mentioned before, the amount of square footage that there is per capita in a particular district. In this one example I gave you in Florida, it was within a six-block area that they were able to put this development, and it was only because they could find a market area that allowed only, that had only somewhere of around nine-square-foot area per capita. So it's not, it's, it's still going to happen. The purpose of the design standards is to provide some way of making them look to meet your goals and your desires as indicated within your plans.
Does, do these design standards increase the cost of building?
They do. However, in talking with developers of these self-storage units, they indicated that based upon a development like the one that I mentioned of approximately 200 units, he told me that the difference between that one and one that was going to be developed on, in the manner it had been in the past was going to be approximately $7 a month. Right now, I have a self-storage unit that's $140, $40 a month. This person was willing to lease the same amount of square footage as I'm leasing for $140 for $147, and it will look like the first one that I showed you.
Thank you. My last, my last, this is a statement and not a question. I am concerned that the planning commission voted 6-0 on this, and I'm concerned that as a council, I'd like to listen to our commissions and especially our planning commission. They study these things more in depth than what we generally study. And I'm really torn on this one because I was at the L U T C meeting when the letter was presented by Bud, and I saw some very upset and concerned planning commissioners. And I don't want to lose any of those commissioners. They've put a lot of years of service into the city. They know what they're doing. So I'm really torn on if I'm going to be supporting this or not because I would like to support our planning commission. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Copeng, and then Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Doc, thank you for the presentation. I think as Deputy Mayor Honda said, we did have a lengthy L U T C meeting this last time because of the interest I had as the chair, and I think the rest of the committee had in hearing from the planning commission and understanding their opposition to some of these standards. I think some of the issues that they raised, I really understand as being a valid concern. But I think when I, when I back up and I look at the design standards, we created design standards for our multifamily housing based on how we want this, the appearance we want. We've done it for business, for buildings as well. So I, stepping back, I realize that really the only thing that we haven't talked about yet is design standards for warehouses. Am I missing anything? Have we, is, is that an accurate statement, Doc?
Yes, it is. What we're looking at is taking it one step at a time because we're also looking at design standards for warehousing. We just have to look at it in terms of priority. In this one, we had a one-year window. We did it within 10 months. There is one comment I would like to make in relation to the statements made by the planning commission. As I mentioned, a lot of them were upset about infringing upon property rights, but there was also concern about the safety of these types of units. One of these units that I showed was a drive-in unit, which a lot of new self-storage development is using in their design. That's one of the things that we're suggesting. And also, it's, I would like to emphasize that all of these would have to meet fire standards and all of our building standards today. So the, the self-storage units that we saw in the 90s, the 80s, and the 70s that exist right now are fire hazards. And the ones that were proposed, or the design standards doesn't affect what's going to happen with the building standard. And they would have to meet those building standards before they would go up, before someone could actually go in. So we're not presenting something that is new. We're presenting something that has been used in other communities and has been proven to be useful and safe.
Thank you for clarifying that point. That was actually a follow-up. So basically, we have not created these standards. These are standards that are, have become somewhat of a design standard template for other communities in addressing the ongoing need for storage, self-storage facilities.
They exist in, and each of these standards exist in one or another community.
So nothing was created out of whole cloth.
No.
Really, in your research, you looked at the other standards in the other cities and basically created something that, that works.
We use those examples.
I think what I, as I look at, you know, I think we're, as a council, we really need to look at things 20 years out. And I look at our current storage facilities, and I really see, like you said, I see fire hazards, I think, in some cases. They don't, they're not the safety standards that we're proposing going forward, but they also are basically sprawling, somewhat unattractive, and not to denigrate an industry, but they're outdated. And I think that we certainly, if we want to look at our city going forward, I think for, it's important, since we have to acknowledge the fact that we're going to continue to have storage units as part of, of the businesses that operate in our city, that they're as attractive as they possibly can be without being, without creating an undue standard that is not sustainable from an economic standpoint. And I believe you're saying that based on your research and your feedback, that we would not be imposing an undue standard and jeopardize or prevent the development of future storage units based on economics.
There are a number of developers that actually use these standards, and they take them into account in, in the cost of any of their buildings. And it's true that a number of developers will not come to areas that do not have these standards, but a lot of your quality developers do have a science in, in establishing these, and it does not prevent them from coming to those areas with these, with these standards.
The last thing, Doc, is the, the planning commission recommended that we not have self-storage facilities continue to be developed in neighborhood business zones, in the B-N zone.
That's correct.
And in making, in creating that restriction, the demand to have, is going to only increase in the zones that are acceptable for that development, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So going up is probably in, is going to be a realistic solution to address the continued growing needs for self-storage units in Federal Way.
I might mention that while, while we were developing these standards and doing this research, I had two calls from existing storage owners that was asking, that were asking about the moratorium. And the reason they were asking about the moratorium is because they wanted to raise some of their existing storage units and go up. They wanted to get more units and go up. And I said, "Not yet. Call us back."
Okay. Thanks, Doc.
All right. Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Thank you. So part of the design standards is to have 100-foot maximum facade length, right?
That is correct.
Could it be like U or L-shaped and have more square footage then?
It could be an L-shaped building, yes.
And with that, could that give them 300 foot, for instance?
It would give them 200 feet on the outside if you had an L shape.
Or U, or whatever. Yeah, but they can maintain the 100 foot on the street side and still have additional 200 if it's U-shaped.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm looking for that particular, I think this is it. Yes. This particular building, as I mentioned before, I could accept under the design standards that we're adopting because we do have roof undulation, we have glass that we're seeing, and we have that L shape that you're talking about. The only thing I would be asking here is that they remove the doors from sight. They would be driving into this building. It would not be seen from the, from the street, nor would it be seen from any of the residential districts. So they would look like this, or could look like this.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, Doc, thank you. Stay, stay ready if we get into a discussion here, you know, for the discussion. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 742, amending Title 19, Federal Way Revised Code related to self-service storage facilities and design guidelines, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to design guidelines for self-storage, storage, self-service storage facilities, repealing Federal Way Revised Code 19.215.130 and adding a new section to Chapter 19.115, Federal Way Revised Code.
All right. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I moved forward the proposed ordinance to the August 14, 2018 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
Open a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I have one more question.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. Do you know if the planning commission has ever had a recommendation to not accept something and then the council has voted to accept it?
Not on this, not on this council, but in the years that I have been in the business, I've seen a lot of recommendations that were amended or turned over, but not while I've been here.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Copeng?
Yeah. Doc, what would be the result of us not approving this, this amendment or this, these design guidelines tonight?
You would still, you would still see self-storage units. They would still occur in the B-N zone. I would imagine that a number of them will, will be more attractive than they are right now, but they'll still be spread. I think one of the reasons that we were suggesting not having them in the B-N zone was a vision of the city. The vision and the goal of the B-N zone was to have the commercial as pedestrian-oriented. Storage units are not pedestrian-oriented, and that was one of the major reasons that we put that on, along with the, the reason why it went into effect in the first place, which is 2005, and the recommendation or the proposal by one particular individual who wanted to do it in a B-N zone and never submitted that proposal. So we were looking at the vision of the city. If that was not to happen and, and the council wished to deny this, I would recommend that the vision be changed in terms of that because we're basing this on the goals that you read within the report and the comprehensive plan.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Sepha Dawson?
Yeah. Could this be postponed to where we can have a conversation with the planning commission and see if they would reconsider if they have, because the, the design standards are great, you know, everything, I mean, the moratorium has to be lifted. So if there's a way we can postpone it to where we're not infringing on the, on the moratorium and yet have some kind of an, an understanding or an agreement with the planning commission, because I do understand what Deputy Mayor Honda is saying. But, or maybe, I wonder if that would be some, some way to, to negotiate it and have some kind of an understanding between the planning commission and the council before we vote on it.
Okay. Councilwoman Copeng?
To, to address Councilmember Sepha Dawson's point, I think that the, the land use and transportation committee made a very, a good faith effort in reaching out to the planning commissioners individually and soliciting their specific advice on guidelines in two emails, two emails and multiple phone calls. What they did is they basically reinforced the points that they'd already made and really didn't give us any additional guidance on the issues. I believe at this point, they're pretty entrenched, and as a member of the council, I was a commissioner. I was a commissioner on three different commissions, and I understand the role of the commissioner, but, commissions, but they are to advise us. And I think that for us to allow the, the moratorium to expire and basically have no, no vision of what we want the self-storage facilities to look like going forward, and having them continue in the business, neighborhood business zone, which is something they're recommending against, I think that would be contrary to, in, in part, to what our, what our role as, as a council is, is to bring in all the information and then make an informed decision. I believe that we've heard from the, the, the planning commission, we've heard from the staff. I think we have enough information to make our own decision at this point. And while I don't like to override a commission recommendation, I also understand that we wouldn't be fully overriding it because we are changing, we are accepting their recommendation on no longer having self-storage, self-storage units being developed in the neighborhood business zone.
Okay. Councilor Tran?
Well, most of the stuff that I want to say, Councilmember Copeng already said it. However, I do recognize the concern from Deputy Mayor Honda, and I do recognize the collective experience from the members of the commission altogether. But like Councilmember Copeng said, each commissioner understands their roles and responsibility, and that is to advise the council. In this particular case, we have enough information. We want to make sure that this particular business, as well as some other future businesses, to have some type of standard. By voting or overturn the recommendation from the planning commission, to me, is not, is not to tell them that they are not doing a good job. It just simply said the information, the reasoning from this group of commissioner is a little bit different than our perspective. So I agree that we have enough information to move forward, and that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Sepha Dawson?
Yeah. And I wasn't asking that we let the moratorium expire because I think it's, it's 10th month. But that being said, I, I totally understand, and I like the new design standards. I just was hoping that maybe there's a way we can take that back to the planning commission so they understand. But I totally understand what all the council members are saying here, and yeah, just wanted to make that comment. But thank you so much for the hard work, and thank you all for making it clear what we're doing, and especially looking at the vision for our city. I mean, what looks better, is it the current one or the new design? And personally, I do like the design that's out there, so.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. It's not that I don't like the design standards. I, I think that they would look better than what we currently... I think that they would look better than what we currently have, but when we voted on the moratorium, it was because there were too many self-storage units coming into place, and this isn't reducing them out as self-storage units. It's changing how they look so that they look better. So, anyway, I appreciate all the work that the staff has done, and I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission has done and the LUTC committee has done.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a quick comment? So, to Deputy Mayor Honda's point about that none are being eliminated, one of the key points of this amendment is they're being eliminated from the neighborhood business zone.
Yeah, I was just going to...
Everywhere else is just a design standard upgrade, but for the neighborhood business zone specifically, they are being eliminated.
From the BN, yeah. One other point of clarification, I think our direction to Doc and to the community development staff was to investigate. We didn't give you any direction. We didn't say we want less. We said we want to understand. And I know that you just characterized us as wanting less. I think in actuality, we want to understand what was going on. So, I think I, as a council member, have a better understanding now of why the demand is what it is. I think part of it is artificial from Tacoma restricting it, but I think part of it is crowing city, and storage units are going to be a part of our future. So, we want them to look good.
All right. We've had a vibrant discussion about it. There's been a motion, a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Honda? Councilmember Sepha Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Copeng?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember DuKlo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Now, moving on to council reports. Councilmember Sepha Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. Listening to the Start Zone presentation today, I personally, from my job, I do refer a lot of people to Start Zone, and they've been very successful at starting their own business, or at least understanding what it takes to start a business, because a lot of, I mean, $15 an hour is not sufficient for anyone to become self-sufficient. So, I just appreciated what they presented, and I hope that they continue serving the residents of Federal Way. And then the other thing I wanted to share with the council is Sound Cities Association is taking nominations for appointments. So, if anybody's interested, make sure you apply. There's numerous committees that we can serve on. The only thing you want to be cautious about is that they don't want multiple people applying for the same position, so maybe we'll funnel it through Deputy Mayor Honda to make sure that not two people apply to serve on the same committee. And this is starting January 2019, and so I'll just leave this at Jerry Lynn's desk for everyone to see. And then also, Sound Cities is has a forum on cybersecurity for cities, and so if you're interested, please RSVP, and this is also at Jerry Lynn's desk. I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be super brief tonight. I just have an update for an event this Saturday, July 21. The Multi Service Center is hosting a Latinx Black Party from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Multi Service Center parking lot, and so I think with everything happening in the nation around immigration, they're going to have some free immigration legal resources for the community, as well as free medical resources, food, music, resource tables. So, it'll be a great event, so I hope the community can come out and support. That's it.
Great. Councilwoman Tran? All right. Councilmember Copeng?
You did it to me again. I wanted to mention Special Olympics. I think it's such a, it's really became a labor of love, I think, for Tim Johnson in economic development, but also for the parks staff, I think. And I think also, well, I know, also for the Aquatic Center, while it's not a part of the city, I think we've all adopted it. And I think what I heard, the feedback that I heard, was that they were exceptionally well-taken care of by the City of Federal Way, and they felt very welcomed. They felt that our attention to detail and our care and concern for them as athletes and for the event as a whole was unparalleled in their experience across the nation, which I think is certainly speaks very highly of the combined effort of parks and economic development. And I just wanted to thank you all for your outstanding efforts in representing our city. I think it was a lot of fun. I had the opportunity with Councilmember Tran to hand out awards at the Aquatic Center and to see the swimmers be recognized for their efforts. There was gold medals, there was silver medals, there was bronze medals, there was participation medals. I think everybody that participated received recognition, which is huge. But they were held to standards. I know there was a couple events where there wasn't a gold, silver, or bronze medal handed out because they didn't qualify for the event, for the standards of the event. So, they were held to the standards of the event, but they still were rewarded for participating. And I think that's important to have standards, but also to recognize the achievement of being a part of the Special Olympics and participating in the events themselves. I just was so inspired by the athletes. I took the day off on Thursday and got to watch the gold medal soccer team and the silver medal flag football team, and both teams competed fairly. They competed with heart and represented our city very well, represented themselves very well. So, it was very encouraging. The last thing I want to talk about is another project by We Love Our City. They did a big effort at the Blueberry Farm Park this last Saturday, and they're planning on doing something again the second Tuesday, or second Saturday in August as well. And great, great, great event from the standpoint that the Parks Team came alongside and really prepared the site for volunteers to come in and do the hard work that need to be done, more the delicate work that need to be done around the plants themselves. And again, I think just another great example of the Parks Team stepping it up once more, but also our community getting engaged in creating solutions for our city in areas that we can't necessarily get to as much as we'd like to. So, again, a big shout out to the We Love Our City group, but also to the Northwest Forest Square, which Taylor, who's the young adults pastor there, was very interested in doing a project and saw the Blueberry Farm Park as an opportunity for his group to get involved. So, again, a shout out to them as well. And that concludes my report.
Councilmember Moore?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. You know, as I stated earlier in the meeting, I had a chance to take a little vacation, take a little break from everything. My wife and I enjoyed our time in Sedona, Arizona, and of course, we had a hard time getting to Arizona because the monsoons hit, so we were about three hours late. So, that was an interesting thing to kind of experience. But it was, you know, had a wonderful time. We actually did off-roading. If you can picture me off-roading on ATV, I don't know if you can, Mr. Mayor. I sure can't, but it was a fun, fun, and wild experience, and Sarah and I just had a really enjoyable time. Coming back, you know, when you're in Arizona for a week or so, you start to kind of get used to the brown factor. Everything is brown, you know? You don't see much of green. And it was really interesting because when we came in back into Washington State on Saturday, we not only got to see an epic picture of Mount Rainier that I have never seen before, literally, we were right on top of Mount Rainier. It was incredible. And then you just look out to the window and you see the ocean and Puget Sound, and then you see all these green trees. You kind of get this moment where it's like, whoa, we live in a beautiful state, and we all hear these type of stories, but it's really kind of phenomenal to kind of put everything to the side and just really enjoy and notice our natural beauty as a state. And what a difference from Arizona to Washington State. It was just phenomenal. And so, it just kind of got me thinking, man, like, we got to do everything we can to protect our land, our environment, and it's why I'm grateful that Civil Warehouse Group has been active, Friends of Camp Killworth has been active to save that phenomenal piece of land, and, you know, and it's phenomenal to see people like We Love Our City try to take care of our environment in Federal Way. And it's why I am really proud of the council for taking, you know, a step in retrofitting our Performing Arts and Events Center for solar panels, you know, and so, and for taking a silver lead in building that building. And so, it was just kind of an interesting moment that I kind of recognized. Thanks to my colleague, Councilmember Copeng, he mentioned that the second Saturday will be the next Blueberry cleanup event with the, I believe, second Saturday, is that right? August 11, yes, thank you. And so, I plan to be there. I was upset that I wasn't able to join this past time, but I just really appreciate everybody that just really looks after our environment, just advocates for the beauty of the state. And so, we're just absolutely fortunate to, like I said, live in a gorgeous state. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman DuKlo?
I'm going to change things a little bit here because I'm sure all of you followed the rescue of those young children trapped in that cave, and I was especially watching it because as a diver, I knew the perils that could happen to them, and I especially knew since a monsoon was on the way that they didn't have a whole lot of choice of not to go in and try to get them all out instead of trying to take them out one at a time. They really were pushing it, and I'm so, so, I was so happy that they got them all out safe, including their leader, and that those kids are going to be fine. So, I was extremely happy about that, and I think that's the way I'll end my report. Thank you.
Here, here. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. This morning, I attended the South County Area Transportation Board, known as Skateboard, and I have some information. We talked about the regional integrated transit network for King County and I-5 system partnership, and so I'll leave some information on Jerry Lynn's desk if you're interested in reading that. It is interesting how they're looking at I-5 for the next 20 to 30 years and how they can put more off-ramps and how they can make it work for us. I did bring up the fact that I'd love to see passenger-only ferries from South King County up to Seattle because I really think that's our future, and I think that would be a good thing for our area, get people off I-5. This Thursday, I'll be at the King County Board of Health, and we'll be talking about homelessness guidelines and recommendations in healthcare. Every fall in Seattle, and there is a two-to-three-day, last year it was two days, and I think it might be three days this year, health fair for those who are homeless or those who do not have medical care, and people line up for hours to get medical care. It's really an awesome thing that we do here in King County. So, we'll be talking about that. I would be in trouble if I didn't mention the Salmon Bake. It's happening.
I save this for...
Thank you. All right. Well, I have a lot of fines. I have to pay my stuff, I'm sure. Friday, July 27, from 4:00 to 8:00, at Still Lake Park. And the really awesome thing about the Salmon Bake is, other than the fact that the mayor will be serving salmon, as well as Councilmember Copeng and myself, or I don't know what I'll be doing, but I'll be doing a lot of stuff there, is that when I was chair, co-chair of the Salmon Bake, it drizzled all day long until 4:00, when the Salmon Bake started, and it stopped, and we had bright sunny skies. It was amazing. And in 62 years of doing this, I don't know that it's ever rained, so I haven't been around for 62 years yet, but it's amazing. Please come. And I'd like to thank Suzanne Vargo and the Historical Society here in Federal Way for nominating Camp Killworth. It is a beautiful and magical place. If you've never been there, please don't go there now because you'll be trespassing, but hopefully, one day, it'll be open again to children and youth and families because it truly is a very special place here in Federal Way. And thank you very much.
Okay. We're not done yet. We'll need to go into executive session and recess for that purpose pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I. And how much time? About 30 minutes. Okay, we're in recess for that purpose.